For members of the public here, I'm sorry that we, the executive session went a little bit longer than we expected, but if I can have you stand so we can say the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
We called the roll in the executive session, but I need to also call it here, so this is convening the regular board meeting for Tuesday, August 27th. And present is Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convetito, Mr. Lou, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Phil Dwyer, Mrs. Iaccona, Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Carey will not be with us tonight, and Mrs. Brand. We have three sets of minutes before us for approval. We'll take them one at a time. And the recommended motion on the first enclosure is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 25th, 2013. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Brand, do I have a second? Mr. Convetito, any questions on the minutes of June 25th, 2013? Hearing no questions, all in favor, say aye. Raise your hands, it's unanimous, okay, that's one. The second is the special meeting of July 16th, 2013, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of July 16th, 2013. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Iaccona, seconded by Mrs. Brand, any questions on the July 16th minutes? Having none, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. And the third set of minutes is the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of July 24th, 2013. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Iaccona, Mrs. Brand seconds, any questions on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye, unanimous again, okay, one on the roll. Thank you. I have not been told in advance whether there are any committee or liaison reports, so are there, is there anybody that has a liaison or committee report? Mrs. Brand, Mr. Fattabean, Mrs. Iaccona, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Lou, Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Cannelli?
Just briefly, the Policy Committee is in the process of receiving the report and hearing the details regarding the board goal connected to the mission of the Fairfield Public Schools and the goals, and so that's still ongoing and will continue at our next policy meeting on Tuesday, September 3rd.
Any questions for Mrs. Cannelli? Okay, Superintendent's Report, he'll, has a couple of items to talk about that include Enclosures Number Four and Number Five, so I'll turn it over to the Superintendent.
Thank you. Enclosure Four has a front and a back, so just in case you thought we were done with Number 23 this year, there is a back on the initiatives. This is similar to the format of the list that we, you saw last year, that we reviewed at the beginning of the year. This time I added a description of what these are, because sort of people were saying, well, what gets on the list, what's not on the list, this isn't everything, so there's a description there. And these are, you know, district-wide improvement initiatives, they're not improvement initiatives that might be going out in a single school, they really are not necessarily the day-to-day operations, but these are considerable activities designed to improve one or more aspects of the school district. And as you'll see in a few cases, they're responses to state or federal mandates, but in many cases, they are initiatives that we've been working on for a number of years, and this is sort of the next stage in their iteration. So, the biggest ones, and the first clump is program implementation, so generally this category includes items that the Board has approved in the prior year, and this year we need to implement them. Simply because they are approved doesn't mean they're done, and implementation is often much more difficult than design work. And of course, the biggest one there, the one, the 800-pound gorilla, with the phrases, or is it 600-pound gorilla? And this is 800 pounds, is the new teacher administrator evaluation plans, this is going to consume us. We have started the trailer of that, we are, we had very good sessions with the teachers and the administrators over the summer and over the last couple of days to implement, you remember how thick those documents were. And the phasing of teacher evaluation, although that sounds like it would be easier than full, it really is about 70 percent of the teachers are going to fall under the full implementation here, so this is a heavy lift. And this is going to, in fact, when we started with this list, I said to the central office, I said, look, we gotta keep it down on the initiatives, this is gonna really, to do this well is gonna be a huge thing, and we are down from 39 to 31, but we didn't really knock it too far back. So that's the big, that's the big thing, and we'll, we'll see how that, how that goes. Everyone has a really good attitude about it for the time being. We have curriculum and other programs that I think you, you saw for, that we put in place for last, you know, last year, so as a reminder, math, English Language Learners, Student Success Plans, which is a state mandate, the full-day kindergarten, as well as integrating the pre-K at Dwight, which is new, if you remember from the Rational Balance Plan. And then we have sort of the continuous improvement, these are all, these four elements are all part of, fall into that category of multi-year improvement efforts, and we're definitely, you know, putting our, our eggs in the school improvement plan, common assessment, data team basket. One of the things that is new here is, and this actually is something that I'll be facilitating, is a district-level data team. We've been operating data teams at the school, sometimes even at, at the department level, at the grade level, but not at the district level, and actually, it's something important to have for the administrator and teacher evaluation plans, so that's something we'll be starting up shortly. Common performance assessments is, is, got several tentacles to it. One is a technical part of the transition to the Common Core state standards, at least in English Language Arts and in math, but it's also important because in the teacher evaluation plan, everybody, regardless of whether you're in a tested area, needs to show student progress based on common assessments. And so, developing continually new common performance assessments, you're probably gonna see that on this list for several years. So, curriculum program development, so this is some, something that you'll see, some of it will take longer than a year to do, but just so you know it's on the agenda, I think you saw last year in the schedule what's coming to you for approval, so math for grades 11, 12, Algebra II and up, high school business, and secondary language arts. So there's, the biggest one of those three, obviously, is the, the language arts. So those will be coming, we'll stagger those through the year, and we have a sequence, so that probably starting in January through May, there'll be curriculum on every agenda as it moves forward, which I think is actually something the Board had talked about, you know, also wanting to do on a regular basis, so I think we've got it stretched out that way. We're continuing to look at the alternative high school and see if we can make some improvements there. High school schedule, there it is. We promised the town, quite frankly, when we went through the Ludlow High School expansion project, that one of the reasons we asked to expand the cafeteria at Ludlow was because under the current size of the cafeteria, couldn't feed everyone lunch. And, so that was really the lunchpin to getting us off the ground, but I'm being realistic here, just the way construction projects work, the earliest you're gonna see that revised schedule would be September of 2015. So whether we'll actually have a full-blown schedule to present, you know, this spring, it's really not a drop-dead date, but just so people know, and we're signaling that we are gonna do this, and we're working on it, but we don't want people thinking it's gonna happen next fall, because you can't. And while we're at it, the middle school principals and Dr. Boyce are interested in looking at the middle school schedule, so we're in scheduling mode for this year, whether it results in a change to the middle school schedule is up in the air. We have to look at that in light of the Common Core and other requirements, and so that's, that's, that's on the docket, some interest there. And there's another Special Education Department, I believe this actually, Andrea Leonardi talked about this, at some point during the budget season, and the question came up, I don't know if it came from the Board, or from the Board of Finance, or somewhere along the line, somebody said, you know, what else can we do to try to educate more kids in-house as opposed to outplace? And the response was, well, you know, if we had a therapeutic day program, you know, maybe we could have the best of all worlds, more kids educated here, less expensive, better program. But it's, it's not something you just snap your fingers and have happen. So again, we can't promise that we have a full-blown plan, but we're gonna give it our best shot. So those are sort of the program development parts of it. Staffing, we really have five contracts out this year, teachers and administrators don't come up until a year from this, a year from fall. The new administrators, substitute staffing, I think that was raised last year near the end of the year as an issue, and Leford is spearheading that one, now we're gonna look at a lot of options there, and that's quality and quantity on that, on that front, so we're, that's an ongoing effort. Technology, technology always has a bunch, and this will never be done, and technology is continually in an upgrade, some of ours are carried over from last year, we didn't quite get the entire K-12 done, like on technology distribution, we got some of that done, not all of it. But we, we shoot high here, and don't always get it all done, last year there were a few things that got in the way. If there comes by the end of this year, we should be, what we'll call thorough implementation. And 20 years of carryover, district-wide approval process for software, we're looking to implement electronic applications for efficiency, you see some examples there. We've done that in some cases, we've rolled out a new program for reservations and for technology work orders and for maintenance work orders, but we're always looking to do more of that. We are traditionally here in Fairfield, a paper-intensive operation, and it's time to move ahead. Technology is certainly about to carry over, you all remember that from the technology plan, on the back page. We had some goals for food service, that's, obviously, need to continue to make improvements there. And we have a new transportation contract, you know, the whole thing, we went out to bid on it, but the new contract brings all new challenges, there's new buses, new buses that don't fit under bridges, we have a lot of challenges, so the new transportation contract will be an adventure. Uniform chart of accounts is a state law, we don't think that's gonna hit this year in terms of what you look at in terms of budget review, because it looks like they're gonna ask Doreen to convert everything to the new uniform chart of accounts when she submits at the end of the year, but it's not gonna be ready. They, they're not done with it, but we are transitioning to that. So, to some extent, exploring the new chart of accounts through the whole budget process will probably take another year. I wanna be very clear about budgeting for, for next year, and this is something that obviously goes to the Board for, for approval, but, you know, we just need to make it clear, we need to fully fund all these mandates, any of these initiatives in our existing programs, and, you know, developing clinic mediating is the best we can do, we can't, we cannot obviously control the approval process. 20 is, comes out of the state legislation, someone that I gave you, we are looking at the Fairfield Police Department, we have been for other years, but obviously with great intensity since the Sandy Hook incident, we are revising, and we are looking at the police department on that, and we do need to get that done, believe the deadline is the end of this school year through legislation. Our long-range facilities plan, you remember from last year, that was there, we talked about, hey, let's get another enrollment projection, so that's Number 30, we're working with our vendor on that, and let's get a report from Warden and Corrigan about the hazardous materials, let's get the school safety report from the police, package that together, and then look at our long-range facilities plan. So that's, 20 and 30 are tied together, and 31's a holdover because those building committees have not officially asked you to accept the project, so those are still ongoing, so I have that under the, I hope, department. Hopefully that comes off, and we don't have to carry that over. All right, I'll stop there and-
Questions from the Board, Mrs. Brand.
Thank you, yeah, given the volume of this, and quite frankly, what I wanna see that this is written, is if this can be incorporated into a strategic plan, so that, because this is really components of it, that we had a strategic plan to update it, that would allow us to take a look at a timeline, when you expect how long something to, you know, to go on and be completed. In addition to that, if we also could have with that cost estimates, now I know some of them you won't have yet because you haven't looked at the high school and middle school schedule issues, but I think moving forward, that'd be very beneficial for us saying that we wanna fund these, what we actually think they cost, as we're moving forward in the budget process as well. And if possible, also to have the Chair and the Superintendent talk about what we can do through the year and start to put place card holders, so that we can get, from Dr. Tidal, updates on how we're progressing on pieces of it through the Superintendent's report, 'cause, you know, you have this all in writing, we look at it, and then over the course of the year, not by anyone's intent, but we sort of forget, we get busy with other things, and we don't really follow the course on how we're doing, and I think that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Lou.
Thank you. On Dr. Tidal, number two on the program implementation, that, that was the math program that, that was gonna be worked on over the summer, is that correct, the PK through 12, two?
These were the two that you approved the curriculums last year.
Right.
And there has been work going on over the summer to develop implementation plans and more detailed work for the teachers, and they'll be implementing it this year. So, we approved the curriculum.
Right, I understand that, I'm just, since it hasn't, since it wasn't done yet, and now it's, I guess it's done and about to be implemented, can we see it?
See whatever we have done, sure.
That'd be super. Could we also maybe get a list of, of the people who worked on it, and also, I'd love to be able to have a budget on what that particularly cost. I know these were all issues that came up last year, and I think it'd be great to be able to, you know, conclude the circle of information. I, I also am concerned, I mean, gosh, this is a hefty list, and I sympathize with the amount of work that has to get done, but I am cautious that, aside from the state mandates, that we are not going to, I mean, I don't wanna implement, I don't wanna stymie process, but I also don't wanna get ourselves into a situation with a budget where we're doing new things, and we haven't thought about how we're going to hold the budget, because I know last year's budget was incredibly tight, and I feel like we might be there again this coming year, so I think it might be important that not only do we get to see as soon as possible some of your favorites and what are the numbers, but that you could put those favorites before us so that we have a say in them before they get too far embedded into the budget.
Yeah, we're taking notes on the conversation, other comments, Mrs. Iaccona.
I was just wondering if you could offer any insight into a revised middle school student schedule, like, what does that mean, you're looking at larger chunks of instructional time, or changing graduation requirements, or what?
No.
Like-
No, I think there's some question about looking at the sixth grade program, and whether we wanna keep the teaming structure the way we have it in sixth grade, just as an example, we might not change it, but right now, as you know, the teaming structure in sixth grade is different from seventh and eighth, and there's some question about whether that's the most effective way to deliver or not, so that's one example. Curriculum comes through for your approval, so that's really not a curriculum question.
Right.
And, hell, middle school schedules, sometimes they're just done a certain way for a number of years, and, you know, we have two new principals and new Director of Secondary Education, and take a look and see how it compares to best practices in other middle schools, and could maybe we don't make any changes, could be we make some minor tweaks, could be we, you know, something bigger than that, but I don't think there's any particular agenda there that, it's not like the high school one, we're saying, look, the goal there is to get every kid lunch, you know, that's a, it's a little bit different here.
It's just a good time to review, 'cause you have so much new staff, really.
And there is new curriculum, and, and new expectations, and you have to look at a lot of different elements of the middle school program, and, you know, the length of classes, are they the right length of time, and so forth. Again, it's not a criticism, it's not saying it's a broken, you know, thing, I think, you know, but it's exploratory in nature at this point, I guess is the best way to put it.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Mr. Convetito.
Just two quick observations, on the full-day kindergarten, I assume, how did that go this year, or was there any issues with that, or?
Well, it's about to start.
No.
I think there were, I mean, not getting too deep into it, I think we had talked about at the tone when we decided this, that if there were some families who had individual needs with their children, that we would try to, you know, work with those and, and work on a modified dev necessarily, I did get some inquiries around that, we've been working with individual families, but I can't say it's been a, you know, a, a huge lift in that regard. So I think we'll, you know, we'll get a better feel for it, you know, two or three months into the year, but that's something that we wanted to have on there because we wanted to, you know, make sure that went well, that's why it's there.
Did, was there any indication of it affected enrollment at all or not with people?
Not at this point. We seem to be pretty, pretty, pretty close to the numbers right now, I mean, I'll have a beginning of school report for you at the next meeting, and we'll go over, we'll go over enrollment, you know, September enrollment at that point, but it does not appear to have made any difference in enrollment.
Okay, and, and just on the high school schedule, I commend you for taking that back on again. I personally would like to see that sooner than later, 'cause I know it'll probably have some budgetary effects, and just purely selfishly, I have an eighth grader, so I'd like to see it.
Me too.
Well, we can't, we can't construct the school class enough.
But I know, it's been on the table for a number of years now, and I think it's about time we push this issue forward.
Do I understand this correctly, that there's very unlikely to have any change for the 14, 15 year, so there shouldn't be any budgetary impact on the 14, 15 year, the impact will be on the 15, 16 year if we make any substantial changes?
Correct, for all of these, you know, if there's any budgetary impact, we definitely bring that through, I mean, you know, any, any kind of change, before it gets to made, there has to be a, you know, budgetary considerations, and, you know, it's not the case that every one of these things will cost money, in some cases, this will save money. You know, we implemented Infinite Campus, yes, there was a one-time upfront payment for that, but if you remember last year, we, we rolled out about $60,000 of costs out of the budget because we took out some legacy programs, so not all, I don't think that all of these are costly initiatives, or, some may save money, some may be cost-neutral, have no, no impact whatsoever, but one of the reasons I do wanna point out that I put 27 on there was to make it clear about existing programs, okay?
Other questions from the Board, Mrs. Brand, follow-up.
Actually, a follow-up to what Mr. Convetito had just said, is it possible, I'm looking at, I have September 10th, September 24th, perhaps the first meeting in October where the dust has settled, and you can give us a report on an update on the full-day kindergarten, and also, you know, the busing issue, the costs, and just give us an update of where we stand at that time?
Whatever, I have it, yeah, if that's timely, we'll have to see if that works.
Just hoping that that gives you enough time.
Yeah, the October is, October 20, meaning, one October, I think it's like the 22nd.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll say, you know, I think one of the things that you'll see, I mean, that I, I will commit to all of you and to the public, is to do more updating of all of this as we go through the year under Superintendent's Report, so as things become timely, you know, we'll try to tie back to this as often as possible, like, here's an update on, you know, 6, 10, and 15, and, you know, try to roll that through as we go through the year. So when we have something to report that's substantive, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, 'cause I think originally we had thought that that was gonna have some cost savings, and it'd be interesting, in fact, if it did.
Oh, you mean the full-day kindergarten?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that we can quantify for you.
Right, that's what I meant, yes, thank you.
Mr. Fattabean.
Well, that was fortuitous, because let's get to my next comment, or not really, it's more of a comment than a question, is the request that we perhaps maybe on a more regular basis, like quarterly, get an update as to what the ones that are being implemented, where we are in implementing them, to the ones that have research and revised, you know, what, what is, what direction are we going in? And I would, as I said, I would probably propose to do it quarterly, more so than just ad hoc when something's substantive, but, you know, on a fairly regular basis to say, this is where we are in all initiatives, very brief, this is the direction we're going with this initiative, this is what our research is finding out, we're looking at this, so that we're sort of informed before we get the ultimate conclusion as to what the recommendation would be to how to go. That'd be my comment.
Duly noted, Mrs. Colley.
So, follow-up to one of Mrs. Brand's points, what I was writing next to so many of these is measured by, and the idea of getting a report on, I think it's gonna be really valuable, and obviously, what I would hope is that the administration has figured out, you know, when they give their mid-year, I mean, I would hope for a mid-year report on the teacher evaluation plan, how is that going? You know, in terms of the newly adopted math, the newly adopted English Language Learners, the implementation of the full-day kindergarten, you know, will be the success or progress measured by what, since, I know later we'll be talking about the state tests, what are we doing in-house so that we can measure this all along and not have to wait two or three years to start to get data on that? You know, the two-year school improvement plan, reporting back on that. What were the other things I had? And the timeframe for Number 11, for those three, are those gonna be coming right on each other's heels again, or is that gonna be spread out over the course of the year?
I think the answer was that we'll probably be on the board agendas January through May, different segments of them.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. And for Number 12, when we're looking at the alternative high school, is there gonna be any vocational aspect looked at with that, or is that?
I think it's all part of it, that's all part of it. That's a pretty open end of one, as I'm not sure if that's gonna result in some proposal to you, I don't think it's gonna be something that comes up in time, you know, if there's a budget issue, that it's something that will come in pre-budget. You know, I, you know, some of these, you know, they appear to be a little open-ended, and that's 'cause I am concerned about the volume here, with, with Number One taking up a lot of the work, and so, you know, it's possible that, you know, 12, 14, 15, you know, those may not move along as well as you might think, so I'm, you'll notice the, the verb there, this is for the English teacher, the verb there is a, is a little wimpier than other verbs, so when we talk about developing and finalizing and, you know, finishing as opposed to researching, that's a signal that, you know, time may squeeze those out, you know, and so, you know, we could give an update of, you know, here's where we are, that we've started looking at these kinds of things, but it could be that by January, we are, the white flag is going up and saying, you know, we're just so inundated with all of our work on teacher administrative evaluation and assessment, and that we're just not gonna get to some of these.
Okay, just two final points, I was hoping, for Number 20, is it being clearly communicated who the point person is on issues for that, I mean, is, is there someone in each school with Infinite Campus, or is it a point person here on that? I mean, obviously, there were the bumps here at the start of the year, as much from parents not being registered in the first place, as anything else, but once you've got two new modules in there, I would anticipate that being-
Yeah, they're pointing people in each school, as well as central office, and there is the, you know, ticketing system, the electronic ticketing system for, for people, but that's gonna be ongoing.
Yeah.
I mean, I think you could see the implementation of Infinite Campus carrying over, you know, well into next year.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, last question is that, I am correct, the district strategic improvement plan, the district strategic plan, that expires this year, correct?
Expired.
Expired, 2013, right.
Correct.
Is that just going to be something that we're now kind of in a, just one-year mode with this, and then that gets looked at again, knowing that this evaluation plan is going to be as time-consuming as it is?
Well, my take on this is that you're working on one element of a long-range plan right now, right? You've got the, the goals and mission and objectives part that's being, you know, worked on. I think once those are, you know, finalized, can figure out, you know, do we wanna go to a full-blown strategic planning process that will take a lot of time and energy to do, or what do you wanna do with it at that, at that point, you know? Do we wanna have a group work on developing, you know, measurement for success of those? And then, once we do that, do we then wanna go to, you know, and here are the, here are our strategies to improve those. Right now, we're essentially working off of- Right now, we're essentially working off of, in terms of longer-term planning, the plan that I outlined in January of 2011 that listed, you know, the four major focus areas of improvement in the district. And then basically what I do is, on an annual basis, we take these initiatives and we roll them out. So this is one year's worth of planning, this is not a five-year plan. And then at the end of the year, we say, how far did we get on this? What, what's the next level of work in all, in all of these? So I think that's a discussion for later on, not been determined yet.
Mrs. Gerber.
Thanks. I had a question you brought up for facilities, the Woodward and Curran report. Could we at some point get more information? Because we got the report, but, you know, just kind of moving forward, how that's going to work with our facilities plan and everything, just to get a little more detail other than what we got in writing.
There's actually, there's actually another follow-up report that they're working on for us. And we're inviting them to come, we're trying to get the schedule down, actually have Jeff Hamel, who was the principal, and another person was with him there, Lisa, I think, to come to a board meeting and go through it and answer questions and present it, because just giving you the report, you have questions, we're not really in a good shape to answer them. So we're, the answer is we're trying to get them to come to a board meeting.
Okay.
And, but we want them to finalize that second half of the report.
Sure. Do you know when that might be?
I'm shooting for Sept- late September or October on that. There's, they were still doing some work. And we, we need it as well because one of the outcomes of the first report was, we wanted a specific list of, you know, here's an area of this school where you should go in and say, you know, do some clocking or do something, and we wanted to get that list so we could get our guys to do it. So we're, we're very anxious to get it, so we're, we're pushing them along.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from board members? Mrs. Icorno.
I just have a suggestion going forward and maybe something that you want to add to this. I'm assuming that the sheet will be up on the website.
Yes.
For everyone to review. You know, you point out about the develop a, develop and clearly communicate a budget for 2014, 15 that fully funds state and federal mandates, et cetera, et cetera. I just want to remind the board to remember when you go to vote on your budget and plan it, moving forward, the volume that is on here and the people that lead it are administrators. So remember that as you're having your discussion, and it continuously comes up about whether or not we're appropriately staffed in administration. And one of the things that I thought would be beneficial for people to add, since the public doesn't seem to understand the volume of work that the team here does do, is to add the position of the department that's responsible for, for exact, for example, staffing, you know, finalize the five-year non-certified contracts, you know, HR or wherever, you know? I'm assuming that kindergarten falls under the Director of Elementary Education. I think that will help people better understand that we have a team that works more than full-time up in central office, doing a lot of hard work and the heavy lifting to get this stuff moving. Just food for thought.
Anything else? If not, I have a couple of questions. When we passed the Teacher and Administrator Evaluation Plan, it included an amendment that said we'd want to review it. And I don't know whether you were thinking, what's the best time for us to re-review it? I mean, is it June, or is it maybe not till next fall because of a year-long effort to make it?
You'll be reviewing it very soon. It's a bit of a segue into the next act. Let me, let me answer that when I get to my next item, if that's okay?
And a couple of other items on BOE involvement. Items number 13, 14, 15, even though you say a couple of them may not make it this year. Are there any eventual decisions that the BOE would have to make on 13, 14, and 15 and therefore should they have an asterisk on them accordingly?
The high school's still a schedule. We probably want to bring that to you, we could probably put an asterisk there. We're not sure about the other two. We'll have to see what comes out.
Yep.
Yeah.
Is it fair to say that the therapeutic day program might see the light of day in next year's budget?
Yes.
It might.
It might.
Weasel language.
And I'm, I'm not going to try and clarify whether might is a verb or an adjective or what, I'll just say I'm using the word might.
It's some sort of a modification of something, right, isn't it, Jennifer?
That's all my.
Jaren, is it?
No.
Okay, good.
Those are my only two questions. Any other comments or questions from board members? Mrs. Icorno.
I just had a follow-up on what you just asked. I always thought that the high school's schedule was an operational issue so that that would not require board approval.
I think it's got to come because if it's got a budget implication, you've got to know what you're getting yourself into here.
Okay.
So de facto, it comes.
Okay.
You know, I, I think that it, it's such a big item in terms of its implications. And if, you know, if you can do it with no budget implications, then, you know, maybe not, but the last time around, it had, it had some pretty big ramifications to it. So I wouldn't want you to, you know, just sort of seal it in the budget for the first time. Now, that just, you know, certainly keep you updated on it and where we are. I mean, there's a lot of research done on that, it's still good research. So I don't want you to think that we're necessarily starting over. But it's also not a guarantee that they, you know, the group will land on the same schedule that was landed on, you know, previously. It's a big issue.
One last question, and Dr. Tittle will move on to his next item.
Just one quick follow-up, but is there, do you see that as being a both high school, alternative high school, full school rollout when it's ready, or something that's going to be done at one building before the other?
Nah, both at the same time.
Both the same time?
High schools. The alternative high school would be different. And they would have a different schedule anyways, it's a highly individualized, you know, program. But we, we would go to the same schedule in the same year, in my view.
Okay, moving on to the next item.
The Segway is the teacher evaluation plan, so let me take you over to the education legislative summary. I get like five of these in the mail, I try to pick the one I thought is the most concise yet gives you enough detail, you can always go to the actual language of the statute to get more detail. You know, of course, the big change in teacher evaluation plans, the, the difference is, there's a wrinkle. And the wrinkle has to do with assessments in spur of 2014. Our plan has in it, as required by the state, that 22 and a half percent of a teacher's evaluation will be based on standardized test results. That was presupposing that CMT and CAPT would exist this spring, because what you'd be looking at is growth year over year, from, you know, one year CMT to another. Now, there's a whole other part, another 22 and a half percent were local assessments that were also important, but the 22 and a half percent that was to be guided by standardized tests is now a bit up in the air, because you may have read in the press that the commissioner has made an appeal to the federal government or plans to offer districts a choice about whether or not we administer the CMT and CAPT in reading, writing, and math this spring, or whether we go to the new Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium assessment system. Science will happen either way. Science in grades five, eight, and 10 will occur no matter what, because there is no science in SBC at this point. We have not gotten any form to fill out, to request one or the other, they've not told us the process by which, they have not told us whether there's a lit, they have not even said, here are the pros and cons, or here's the incentives to participate, or here's when you'll get the results, and it, it's really up in the air. And depending on the choice we make, it could impact the evaluation plan. So a lot of this is unclear so that if we, for example, go with a smarter balance, then we may need to reconfigure our teacher and administrator evaluation plan because we wouldn't be able to score 22 and a half percent of it. We'd have to do something else. That's why I said, you may be seeing the teacher evaluation plan sooner than this spring to, 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 to look at it. So there's a lot of uncertainty around this. The whole reform effort, as you can imagine, has been a, been a bit of a moving target. They changed the rules a lot. You know, you heard someone, Esther from CES sat in front of you and said, the board doesn't have to approve the plan. Two weeks later, got a memo from the commissioner saying the board has to approve the plan. We thought we were going to have to do full-blown implementation of teacher evaluation, next thing you know, we had a phase-in option. But the phase-in option had strings attached to it, so we did that. Now, it's the assessment piece, so stay tuned. We will have to report on this by the end of the year, how we've done in the aggregate to the state, but that's a, so we may come back more than once on teacher evaluation. So that's, I don't want to go through all of these, let me just highlight a few where I think it's likely the board is going to see something happen, and I'm looking at the policy committee members to say, get ready. All right, so if you flip over to, and you guys may have all of these, but flip over to the third page, Public Act 13-3, an act concerning gun violence prevention and children's safety, you'll see on the second paragraph there on our school security plans, starting July 1, 2014, each local or regional board must develop an equivalent of school security and safety plan for each of its schools. Now, you know, we have something like that, but will it comply with the mandates? Does it, you know, we are working with the police on it, so that's why it's on our list there. You'll also say that we need to, by next year, establish a school security and safety committee, that's the next one, but they recommend that you do so combined with that, with your existing school climate committee, so we don't have too many committees going and, and their jobs overlap a lot. So that's just coming down the road. Also, want to tell you that we did put in for the school security infrastructure competitive grant program, was authorized by the statute. I think they received about five times as many dollars as for as dollars are available. I don't know that I like our chances, but it was worth a try. So we put in for 27 and a half percent of about $300,000. And it's stuff we have already done, so it's not like new money, so there's no loss there. Uniform school calendar. Here we go. The state requires that for the 15, 16 year, the board adopt a school calendar that is consistent with the districts in the service area. The board had an option to do it for 14, 15, but the timing won't work, I'll just tell you right now, because the deadline for regions to come up with their calendars is April. By April, you're going to want your calendar done, I'm assuming. So basically, you get one more shot at the calendar as a local board. After that, the law requires that you adopt the regional calendar. And so there's, there'll be a committee working on this, CES will be working through it. And so the fun of arguing about the calendar is about to end. Let's see here, other one. Legislation affecting Board of Education financial matters, it's over on page five. The page numbers didn't come out real well on this. Law to post aggregate expenditures by school this year. As you can see in the commentary, it's unclear exactly how school districts are to comply with this requirement. So I think Doreen has got another item in her mutual commitments. So just that's a requirement that we will need to do here in central office. Related to that is on the next page six, recommendations on consolidation. This is a very interestingly worded statute. Because as long as I'm going to talk about, can we combine, beginning this year, the Board of Finance is required to make recommendations to the Board of Ed about where it thinks we could gain efficiencies by consolidating. They are not binding on the board. However, if the board decides not to accept those recommendations, then it is our job to reply and explain why. That's the dynamic that's been set into motion here. However, is that, you know, transfers that you do at the end of the year, we are now required to notify the RTM of those after you do them. We have traditionally sent them to the Board of Finance. We had not sent them to the RTM, so we will be required to send those to the RTM. Don't have to worry about them, but it's, we have to do that. And the last thing I want to say is over on page seven, the childhood obesity. This is going to require a policy change, perhaps, or slight modification. The requirement is 20 minutes of physical exercise each day for elementary school students, that's not a problem here. The act requires that Boards of Education adopt policies concerning employees and others who during their school day prevent an elementary student from participating in PE as a form of discipline. In other words, they're strongly discouraging withholding of physical activity as a punitive measure, and they want the board to adopt a policy that comports with the practice that the board is comfortable with. So it's a policy committee, and we'll probably get some K language, Jim Love, our own practices, and they don't, by the way, define elementary, which is interesting. Pool safety, remember the pool program? We're allowing the requirement to have a lifeguard or coach somebody to monitor the swimmers, and that went us near and dear to the chairman's heart, having operated wise for a while. And I got one, I'd like to speak to, but I can give you my two cents on other ones if you have any interest or want further clarification. And if I don't know the answer, I'll get back to you.
Questions or comments from board members, Mrs. Icorno, and then Mrs. Brand.
On the child obesity, when you're saying physical exercise period, is that akin to recess? I think I had, I think I followed up with the state legislative team and they got me back to me.
Yes.
Yeah, I said it.
Recess is included.
Okay.
So I mean, just on that alone, we're fine. I think it's the question of, you know, are we going to allow teachers to say, you misbehave, no recess? Or are you going to prohibit that by policy?
Right.
Or some in between? I think that's the intent of the policy.
That's, that was my takeaway.
I would have had a lot more recess if this policy was in effect.
Right.
Mrs. Brand, did, is that?
Oh, no, I'm not done, sorry.
You're not done?
If, that's okay, I could just. On the uniform school calendar, it says a 19-member uniform regional school calendar task force was established.
Yes.
At the state level, by the state board, by the legislature, by the, who, what, do you know what that is?
I don't know. I think they're forming it now. It's a state-level task force. I don't know if one task force is going to develop six calendars, one for each region, or whether they're going to do something and say, here are the guidelines, now they're going to ship it out to each region to, not sure I know what the process is yet.
And then specifically, just so I understand, so if our, so we would follow our RESK?
Correct.
And if they, recommendation is for both, for example, a February and April vacation, then that's what we would have?
That's correct.
Okay, and if the start of school is August 30th, then that's what we would do?
That's correct.
Or if it's 15th, or August 1st, or whatever, so everybody in our RESK will start on whatever particular day they determine.
Now, the origin of this, so you know, this is not just some random overreaching, is this was done in one region of the state, and they claimed in that region that there were some savings attached to this because of transportation costs. So many districts are sending kids to magnet schools and this sort of thing, that if everyone stayed on the same calendar, you had some reduction in your transportation costs. So everybody's at vacation the same time, so your buses don't run. Everybody's, you know, that's, that's the idea behind this thing. It wasn't just torment, it was pitched as a, it will save districts money.
Interesting. No, I had one other question. I'd love to see the report on the money savings. You said it was the Board of Finance that makes the recommendations to the, did I hear you correct?
That's how the statute reads.
So the Board of Finance would get together as a body, have a discussion on how we could save money by consolidating, and then send that over to us?
That's the way it's worded.
And that's starting October 1st. Do you know when they have to do that by? Like what, how does that, do we?
No one really knows. I mean, this is one of those things that, not, people haven't authorized it, people haven't operationalized it yet. The interesting origin, if you look at the second sentence, which is in parentheses, says, or, other authority that makes appropriations for the school district. So I don't know whether that means we could also get one from the RTM? I mean, they do the appropriations, actually. So we, we need to get some clarity on this.
Yeah.
But it's clear that the momentum from this is from town to Board of Ed. But it's clear that the momentum from this is from town to Board of Ed. And then we respond, and it appears to be something that they should be doing while they're reviewing our budget.
To, to partly answer the cave analysis of these laws, had a sentence in it that said, the appropriating authority must do so no later than ten days after the school board submits its annual itemized estimate.
Well, that ought to be interesting.
That would be very interesting.
February tenth.
Wow.
Or thereabouts.
But that's, that's just cave sentence, you'd have to go to the actual law to see if.
Right. Again, I gave you a shorter summary than the cave one, and then there's even more detailed ones, so there probably is some more specificity around it.
Follow up, Mrs. Brand, do you mind to follow up to that?
Go ahead.
Just being logical about this, wouldn't it make sense that we ask for that months in advance? I mean, we're talking about trying to come up with five-year financial goals and a, and a plan setting forth. Wouldn't, as opposed to our having to react to the wishes of the appropriating bodies, wouldn't this be a discussion for October, November, when you're forming the budget?
Oh, there isn't stopping from going on. I mean, we've, we've had off and on conversations about some of these and exploring them. Doesn't mean that can't still happen. This is just another requirement.
And we may find that the Board of Finance has read this same legislation, and will start talking about that in the fall so that they can be ready when we present the budget. Who knows?
So I'm just, but I'm asking if this body, why wouldn't we be proactive about it and go to them and say, we would like this from you? It's going to happen.
Why don't we, when we talk about the budget goals and the next agenda item, why don't you bring that back up? Mrs. Brand.
Actually, I think Mrs. Cannelly and I are on the same page, because I would like this document actually go to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, the RTM, so we're all on the same page, because there are pieces that are relevant for them, and I think would help us move that along, to your point. One of the things I had was actually on the first page, and it talks about, now the teacher evaluation is called changes to teacher evaluation plans. It's the mutual agreement between the Board of Education and Professional Development and Evaluation Committee. So the way I understand it, we now have to appoint people to that committee, and that committee then gives us recommendations. I, I want to understand that better, because I want to know what the board's job is in here.
Yeah, this is, this was a line to the previous legislation to solve a problem that we didn't have in this district. Because we had a committee made up of all the right people in the bargaining unit and so forth, and they agreed upon a plan, you know, sort of management and labor, and brought it to you, and you, and you approved it. This was to address the issue of what if they can't come to agreement? What if administrators and teachers are lower heads about the teacher evaluation plan? What's the dispute resolution procedure? And that was not clear in the statute. And some people were taking the position that, well, the, the Board of Ed can just adopt any plan it wants. It's not a mandatory subject of bargaining, we're just going to adopt it. Other people were saying, wait a minute, that's not fair, that's not how I read the law. And so they passed this amendment to it to clarify that if the committee adopting it can't agree on a plan to bring to the board, that this is the procedure, but doesn't apply to us.
I, I actually was talking about, I think, if a Board of Education Professional Development Committee, I, I actually thought it was relative just for the choice of professional development. Maybe I'm misreading.
Yeah, no, I think it's the committee that develops the teacher evaluation plan.
Okay, the other part was, it looks like you have to come back to us and report twice on the evaluator training and orientation.
Uh, yes, we have to, we have to report to the state on everything as well.
Right, but I, we were talking earlier about relevance for the board, that that was, that's how I understood it. Also.
I have to report to the board, we certainly can, but.
No, that's not what it says.
Yeah.
It says each local and regional Board of Education is required to conduct the training programs and orientation, and at least by annual, yeah.
Which we've done. I mean, we do that, you don't, as a board, do that. So that's what we did over the summer and for the last two days. It'll be ongoing. And I don't think it's just going to be by, by annually, it would be every other year. I think we're going to be doing this on a regular basis for a while.
The last part I had was, there was talk about another kind of exam that we were using, and now I'm trying to see where I, oh, here it is, under legislated, legislation on page six, affecting students, student assessments, that all students enrolled grade three through eight in grades ten or eleven in any public school now take the mastery examination in reading, writing, and mathematics, beginning July one, two thousand and thirteen. Are we talking about CMTs, or is this another kind of exam?
No.
And if it's another kind of exam, can we use it for the standardized testing component?
This was designed to solve a problem that now may be moot.
Okay.
This was, the state law said, all students enrolled in grades three to eight and ten must take the mastery exam. However, the smarter balanced will be given in eleventh grade. So the legislature had to go back in and amend the law to say that you can give the smarter balanced in tenth or eleventh.
Right.
And so that's all that plans to do, and that it's asked further down, that they're going to have a new kindergarten assessment tool, that was all part of it.
Right, right.
But that was really simply a part of the waiver, getting out of no child left behind. It's not a new test, that refers to CMT-encapped, but ultimately is also designed to apply to smarter balanced.
The other, the other thing I noticed, it's also on page six, is minute, minimum budget requirement.
Mm-hmm.
That has been a subject of misunderstanding, I think, in the district in years past as we go through the approval process. So if we, when we're sending this to the various town bodies, if there's something that's specific to a Board of Finance, but that in particular, I know came up with the RTM at one point, so I think that would be very important for folks to understand what that means. It isn't something we're making up, i.e., it's something that is actually required.
Right, well, the minimum budget requirement is, they have to appropriate at least the same amount of money, next year as this year, unless your enrollment's gone down.
Right, and that's why I'm bringing it up, to make sure that people know this and we're real clear.
It's there, still there.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other, Mrs. Cannelly, and then Mr. Convetito.
I've already written most of my questions until Ms. Parks, but just one question I have is regarding this, to develop and implement a statewide kindergarten assessment tool that measures a child's level of preparation for kindergarten, is that with an eye toward, rather than having a date determined when a student may legally enroll in kindergarten, that you have to have achieved a certain level of preparation?
No.
Okay.
No, no, no.
No is the answer. But since I was the chair of the Early Childhood Camera for two years, I have a lot more information on that, and I can talk to you about it offline.
Mr. Convetito.
Since it doesn't look like anybody else wants to talk about that right now.
I would.
Okay.
Two quick things, academic advancement program.
Yep.
The, and my, when I read that over the weekend, we now can graduate kids in grades eleven and twelve by simply administering an exam?
It's allowable under the statute.
Okay.
Doesn't mean you have to do it, doesn't require you to do it.
But does that mean a student can request that?
The board, it's in the board's lap. Graduation requirements are your responsibility.
Okay. And the one immediately following that, is that going to affect our school safety rollout plans?
Which one?
Mental.
What about the, excuse me, which one, John?
The one right below that, the mental, page seven, last one on the, on the second column.
Page seven.
Public Act thirteen seventeen, or one seventy-eight. Commissioner Chosen and Families require to develop a comprehensive implementation plan. Local enforcement agencies and local regional boards of education, high school resource officers are now required to train resource officers.
Right, the, the school resource officers, which are employed by the police department, have some training requirements through here, so that will be up to the police to.
But, but, what I'm looking at is, is a potential budget implication here, okay?
I don't think it would impact us.
Because it says, in addition, local law enforcement agencies and local or regional boards of education employ or engage school resource officers are now required to train. Does that mean, we, it's a shared expense between us, between local law enforcement and the board, or either or?
I think it's either or.
Okay.
And, you know, traditionally, yeah, I wouldn't worry about that one. Famous last words, but I don't see that as an issue.
Any other questions? If not, I'll have one comment, if you will.
I know how that becomes.
Did you have a question?
No, but I was just thinking, I know how that becomes an issue, I'll keep it to myself.
Okay. When you combine two important issues in a single group, the school, school security and the bullying, more often than not, one of the issues gets short shrift. And, and with the issues facing school security, if it is combined, I would hope that this district would find some way to make sure that both got equal treatment and one didn't get lost in the, in the shuffle. Not just a personal plea. And some of you may have noticed that when we asked for a variance for the roof pitch, that it rung a bell with somebody, because eventually it turned into a state law, so that now, not, nobody in the state has to have that half-inch roof pitch.
Help us with the Ludlow project.
Just, just so that you might take note of that small.
Take responsibility for that.
Any other final comments, Mrs. Iacona?
Is it too difficult to put a number on what this, what the new legislation costs the district? Is it too hard to extrapolate that out?
I think we have a better handle on it, once we've started implementing some of this.
I, I'd love to see something where at the end of the year, the new legislation that was passed, you could attach a dollar amount to it, and then send it to our state delegation and say, hey, just so you know, these things that were voted on, this is what it costs the district. Just food for thought.
Yep.
If there was a way to flag it in the budget document, I think we'd be able to.
Yeah, I think I have that on one of the points on the budget review suggestions, actually, so I think we'll, we'll take a stab at it.
So that as a follow-up on the budget guidelines, and Mrs. Cannelly's comment about the, your comment, Mrs. Cannelly, about the impact of new, new legislation also, that you made.
Yeah, on the municipal efficiencies.
Yeah.
Yeah, that piece.
So, we're on to our next agenda item, which is enclosure number six. I remind the board that this enclosure was reviewed at the June meeting, and with a few minor revisions that were as a result of discussion at the June meeting. And that we asked Dr. Tidal and Mrs. Moncel to, to give some thought to these things and come back to us in August with their comments and suggestions. And so what I would like to encourage board members is to listen to what Dr. Tidal is suggesting can be done, can't be done, and then engage in discussion so that he has guidance. And if there's no formal board action, then he will take the board discussion and his comments and move it forward. I will put this on as an agenda item in September, so that if any board member wants to say, but as a board, we ought to take specific action and approve X or request Y, that we will be able to do it, but after that September meeting, then the staff will be in their budget mode and be moving things along. So with that as an introduction, I'll ask Dr. Tidal to comment on the twelve items.
Yeah, I just have some talking points on these, and then I did put a calendar in front of you. So when we get to that part, I want to give you an idea of how we could do the budget review a little differently to give you a little more time. That was one of the questions. That's why you have a calendar there, just a blank calendar. So the first suggestion was, couldn't we do a little bit of a budget forecast? The answer is, you can do them. They are often very unreliable, especially over the three years out, because you can have very large yearly swings in costs. Health insurance, as we know, can drive your budget, you know, a percent or two either way, depending on what happens there, special education tuition, if you have unsettled large contracts, that can be part of it. But that being said, you can do with a set of assumptions, you know, under the following assumptions, and here's a range of what your budget, you know, could look like going forward, once you know your enrollment. I think it would be probably prudent, because if, you don't want to make too many assumptions in learning about contract settlements, but I think after the teachers and administrators' contracts settle in the fall of fourteen, you have three years of known costs at that point of your biggest labor contracts. And that may be the time, you know, to do it, because that's often, you know, your biggest, biggest question mark. I mean, we're just trying to allow our budget to the district's priorities. And I had some conversation with the first selectman about, you know, some longer range planning, but at some point, the assumptions may be so big that it may not be of much use. But we certainly could, you know, work on something if the board, you know, wanted to see it. Current target for higher budget growth related to the rise of inflation, or related to anything, certainly this is in the board's purview. And if you want to say to me as part of upfront development of the budget, you know, in addition to other priorities you might have, if the board as a whole says, you know, we want this budget to come in at X, or, you know, aside from, you know, salaries and benefits and health insurance, we don't want the budget to go up more than Y, I mean, we can try to hit that target. And targets can be hard or soft, you know, you can say, come in at, you know, I don't want to see a budget over X, no matter what, do what you have to do to get it there. Or you could say, you know, here's the target, you know, do what you can do, if you can't do it, tell me why you can't do it. So I think as part of board input, if you wanted to give us a target to shoot for, we could try to hit it. But that's, again, we need to hear a majority of the board feel that way, so, you know, it could be done. I'm not saying no to it. The budget calendar, I think that, one of the issues here is that the board's review happens sort of back-to-back in the same week. And something, you know, we really can't give you the budget earlier than we do, just because of the nature of the development process, and we, and we'll be giving you a full budget calendar. But what we could do is, is spread it out a bit more once you get it. So if you look at your calendar for January of two thousand of fourteen, typically what you would get is, the board base would be on January fourteenth and twenty-eighth, and then the budget review would be the twenty-first and twenty-third. That, that's the traditional way we've done it. Okay? What I would suggest as an option would be, that, that would give you a little time between our review, would be, the budget comes out on the fourteenth, you have the first review on a special on the twenty-first, your next review, that is until the twenty-eighth in a special meeting, and then the regular board meeting and the budget approval will be on the thirtieth, because you have to be thirty-first to finish this. So I'm just trying to stretch that out. So what that does is, you get the budget, and then there's a week to review, ask questions, and so forth, but another week. And then after those two, you know, that's only two days to approval, but at that point, you know, you've had a week in between. So that's just food for thought in terms of, give you a little more time in between. We just, to give you the kind of budget we need to give you, we just get it out. I just can't commit to doing it much earlier than that in January, we're always right up against it. And I have the talent, you know, by the charter, we have to have it done by the thirty-first. So that's a suggestion that would, that give the board more time, but it may only be a second regular day to a Thursday, which we've done. So that's a thought on that one. A lot of the budget presentation, the district goals and priorities with metrics and benchmarks. We certainly could highlight in a budget presentation, both written and spoken, how the budget supports the improvement initiatives and priorities that are annually outlined in here, you just saw a number of them. Our PowerPoint presentation that, you know, we could do for the Board of Ed, I mean, you know, traditionally, when I've given you the budget, I haven't done a fancy presentation the way we do for the town bodies, but, you know, we could prepare that earlier and have it be more global in nature, that, you know, here's our budget, here's why it's important, here's how it, you know. PowerPoint presentations have had metrics in them that show that the town's getting a good value for its investment, we can change some of those. We've put successes on there of how well our students do in the arts and, and sports and music, and test scores, and AP, and college acceptance. So I think, you know, we had included some metrics in that presentation, although it hasn't been detailed enough. And, you know, so we're always looking to, to improve that. So if the board would like sort of a PowerPoint, the same way it might go to Board of Finance and RTM, then perhaps, you know, we start that way with the board. Or maybe you're sick of it for me, who knows? That's for five. For more to tone in, for advanced thoughts, well, I was. Well, I was hoping the board input on this, as I've said before, for our planning purposes, we really, it's best if we got all the board input no later than the October meeting. Really, at that point, we're really into it. September's even better. But again, board input is different from, say, individual member input. And there's a big difference there. So if I sense the whole board or a large number of the board want to go in a certain direction, I can go with that. But one or two members, I have to sort of ferret that out. That's why it ends up being my budget, and then you get to change it. Budget development calendar, we can create this. We've had it in two pieces. We used one on our development plan and another later. Generally, it's subject to change. I think we're committed to doing that this year. So we'll get that out to you as soon as Doreen finishes it. Typically, we have a lot of tubes to announce in April, but we can show people how this starts pretty soon. The budget review focus on a big issue on line items, that's kind of your call. How do you want to spend your time reviewing the budget? Now, one thing that we were planning on doing again this year, it seemed to work out well the last two years, is to get A.R. here in December to do the health insurance, sort of get that news out of the way, ask questions. And so that first night when I present the budget, you know, you could probably get your discussion done on health insurance and pension, because those are pretty much known at that time. There's one more month of experience that comes in between the time and does its presentation, and we do the budget. But you'll have the general idea. And then, you know, on the first review, you could focus your discussion more on the executive summary pages and less on the line items. You could submit line items to us in advance. We could either answer them at the next meeting or do them in writing. We just ask that we get as much time as possible to respond to your inquiries. It helps us get a better answer if we don't get last-minute questions. So I think that number seven is really a discussion for you all to have in terms of how you really want to spend your time reviewing the budget. We're happy to answer anything. The workshop on the budget adjustments, we have done that in our tenure here. That depends on the size of the adjustment. In 2011, we did that, and we did it in between the two May meetings. So what happened was, this was the $2.8 million cut. You know, we tend to meet the day right after the RTM, and I hand out the cuts. Then what we had was, remember this, some of you, we had a meeting like a week later in between board meetings, where we had a board discussion and took public comment on those proposed cuts. And then, in the second May meeting, you made your final decision. So depending on the nature of the cut, we can decide, the board can decide how you want to do that. Not opposed to it, but the year I had a cut of like $250,000, it was probably unnecessary to do it. So that can be, you know, that can be done. But we need final board action by the second May meeting so we can turn the budget over for the next year and get money out to principals as rapidly as possible. Format of the budget transfers report. I'm open to suggestions on that. The current format is actually more detailed than the board had received in prior years. I mean, the concept of any transfers is to be looking at these big buckets of expenditures. And the way they do it, the buckets you get are right from the board's policy. So that's how the law is written, that's where the policy follows the law. The only difference this year is now we have to transmit the end-of-year transfers to the RTM, not just the Board of Finance. Year-end budget reconciliation schedule. You know, the board certainly can look at that as part of feedback for the following year's budget. You do get it, I think they already sent it to you, sent it out in July. But also now, when you're looking at next year's budget, the actual numbers for each line from the prior year is in the book. So as we look at the budget, you can see exactly what the actuals were. So if you're looking for variances, it's there. The stat by the California I talked about, I think that's going to be moot for this year, unless that something changes. And then what about having a page of future budget workbooks, how long and current costs of initiatives, legal mandates? Oh, I think that's worth taking a stab at. We're always open to suggestions about what to include in the budget book itself. In fact, some people made suggestions last year, if you remember. I think some people made them, and we included them. We had that, the deadline, that's a little bit later. We would need that no later than, say, December 1st, because we don't actually put the book together till we have the budget. We certainly could go and qualify the cost of certain mandates, Concorde, teacher evaluation, school safety, bullying, those are a few. You know, we could definitely go and try to cross those out. I don't know if we'd get any sympathy, but we could do that. But we're also interested in suggestions as to what to remove from the budget book. Because one of the criticisms that I had heard when I first came here was, this thing is too gigantic. It was 300 and something pages. People thought it was too much. You give people too much, they think you're lowering them with paper, you know. So we actually fed it back, and it was, been very well received, and it's won, I think, two awards in two years now from Cabe for Communications. So I'm open to additions or subtractions, I guess, from the actual document, if you think it would be helpful. So those are my thoughts and Doreen's thoughts at the present moment. This is a world's record.
Yes, questions from the board on Dr. Title's comments. Mrs. Brand, followed by Mrs. Iaccone.
Yeah, we actually have the information in the document, but sometimes I think a big picture would be very helpful. We have the major categories where we have the transfers. If on the front, we have the percentage of what our actuals were in the major categories and the difference that we have with what's proposed, we reflect that in all the detail. But sometimes when you look at the detail, you lose sight of the big picture. I think it would help people a lot if you give them first upfront the big picture so they can look and see the comparison, and then we can, they can look and follow through the details. To me, that was the part that I was finding the details, and then I'd have to add things up, and I think that would be very helpful.
And the executive summary?
Yes, exactly.
Other comments? No, I'm sorry, Mrs. Iaccone was next, and then Mr. Convatito.
In terms of the budget workbook, it's an addition, it's not a subtraction. But I really think we should have an index in the back that includes, you know how we put out the frequently asked questions document? I think you should include it in the budget book, less likely for people to not show up with it at a meeting. And then you can say, just turn to page whatever in the budget book. Just a thought.
And Mr. Convatito, followed by Mrs. Cannelli.
Just two observations. On the budget book, when you state the previous year's budget and then the new year, you know, the proposed year with the variances, the number you use is always the number that was proposed the previous year, not expended. So those transfers that take place at the end of the year, as far as I can tell, don't get reflected in the new budget document. Is that correct?
No, the line items that are in your budget are the actuals.
For the proposed budget. But the line item for the previous year.
It's the actuals.
It is the actuals.
Yeah, so if they're over expended, it shows it.
Okay, all right. Okay, I thought it was that. I would simply just like a very simple coding system on what's contractually obligated. So it's sort of, I'm a big fixed cost, variable cost type of guy. So if I know that my contractual costs are this for two years, that's not an item that I can necessarily change unless I eliminate the position. So I, you know, I think some coding along that lines would be helpful.
Okay, other questions or comments? Is that a follow-up, or can I go to Mrs. Cannelli?
Why don't you go to Mrs. Cannelli first, and then I'll wait.
Mrs. Cannelli.
Just to go over this list and hearing the input from Dr. Title, I don't know if this is the direction we want to move this discussion in, but personally, I would be most interested in pursuing 5, 8, 12, and then a number 13 of inviting input from the Board of Finance by September, October, in accordance with what you were looking for input from us. You know, if they have some ideas, invite it. It's obviously, I wouldn't expect it to be in the most formal process. They're not getting a lot of time for something like this, but at least to have invited it so that if they're going to drop something on you, it's, you haven't already done a lot of work, and it has to change your thinking at all. But, so again, 5, 8, and 12 would be the ones that, after hearing you, I would be most interested in.
I'm noting, thank you. Mrs. Brand.
In fact, it relates one to what Mr. Convatito said earlier to that point. That's exactly what I was talking, so that you can look at the broad picture and not have to try and, you know, find it later on. That was one thing. And the second thing is, we are, as you know, going through the educational goals and mission statement and long-term goal for the district. It's my understanding that that also was going to have an impact on teacher evaluations, because all of that has to be aligned with the educational goals of the district. But I'm hoping, crossing my fingers, that that also is ready by October, because I think it's come up in the past. That's how we determine our priorities. So we're talking about what we're shooting for year initiatives, the educational goals. Those are the things that we're supposed to have alignment with in terms of what our priorities are for the school district. And to me, that might help the board if we're using that and the pieces in there that we have, that the folks in the policy committee have seen, and also the members of that committee that worked on it. I think that would be very helpful. You know, we might get specific, but it is very specific. And if that's the board then adopts this, it becomes their priorities, and I think then it would follow through a lot easier in terms of what our priorities will be.
Other comments from individual board members on the presentation? If not, then if I can make a couple of, if I can ask a couple of questions to get a read from the board so that Dr. Title will have some guidance. I think an item number one that probably the suggestion is that this is something that should be thought of after the main contracts are settled, and that this would not be the year that he's probably going to move forward on that. That creating a target for annual budget growth, if the board was interested in doing that, whether it has time to do that by the October meeting, or you want to say, let's build that into something that we do and consciously talk about in the spring and, you know, have time to reflect on that. So I'm thinking that that would be what you'd want to do, but if the board wants to try and do something like that, even on a limited basis, then I need to schedule that in October if I hear a majority of the board wanting to discuss that at that time. The suggested budget calendar is out there, and I suspect that that's what he will use, unless the board wants to have another comment. Number four, yes, we'll try and highlight more of the metrics in the presentation. Number five, I can schedule time on the October board meeting to have some specific ideas. Individual board members are always welcome to share their thoughts with Dr. Title offline, but if the board wants to take action as a total board, let me know, and I'll make sure that we have some time in October to allow for that. I would be interested in how you want to, the suggestion number seven, as to say, okay, let's focus on health insurance in December, go through the entire executive summary in the first meeting, and then use the second meeting to look at line item and/or individual departments, whether that seems an appropriate way to do this or not. I would be interested in feedback from the board so that we could plan accordingly. May seems like a no-brainer. We ought to do it, depending on the size of the, we ought to do it depending on how much extra money the RTM gives us. Nine and 10, really, we're doing it by policy at the moment, so those can have, we can talk about those throughout the year if we have some suggestions on the format for the transfers report and the reconciliation, because neither of those happen until the end of the year. 11 is moot, based on the state's timetable. Why don't we at least say that the budget book will take a stab at saying, here's the cost of mandates, and here's the cost of new initiatives? And we'll start there, unless board members say, well, no, let's talk about other items that we'd like to be consolidated on a page and says, here's the cost of this. And I'd be interested in comments beyond state mandates and initiatives. And 13, I'd be interested in board reaction to Jennifer's comment that we ought to proactively ask the Board of Finance to take note of the new law and see if they wish to present anything to us or not. So, Mr. Convatito, based on my comments, are there any other comments that board members wish to make? Mr. Convatito.
I think, you know, adding the 13th one in there, I think being proactive about that is good. As far as the...
Can I stop there? I've got two. Is that a general feeling of the board?
Yes.
Yes, okay, we'll do that. Number 13's added. Go ahead.
As far as mandates and so forth, I just think there needs to be a section in there that identifies them, but should also identify upcoming mandates that would not be included in this annual budget, but will affect next year's annual budget and so forth, if we can have an estimate on it, just so people have an idea of the trajectory and what's within our control and what's not within our control.
That would require Dr. Title to use his crystal ball to say, based on what I know is in the hopper and what's already been approved, it won't impact this year, but next year.
A listing of legislation that will affect future budget. You know, it's not that he has to put a number on it, but we know what's coming, you know, what time.
Coming down the pike.
Well, an example of that was this year with the teacher evaluation, administrative evaluation plan. Like, we didn't put really anything new in, not much in for that new for the current year, but we knew that when we get to full implementation in 14, 15, it was going to be significant and that we may need to come in. So we did preview. Is that the example, like you're talking about?
Exactly.
Otherwise, right, it's hard to know. Sometimes they pass things in May, the budget's done, and you have to find the money for them in July.
They change it in June.
Right, yes. Your legislature at work.
Other final comments or questions that board members have? Mrs. Brand.
Two things. In the past, we've gotten a book, but we haven't had a presentation that first meeting. I think it'd be very helpful to have the superintendent do a presentation with that meeting, to that point, what mandates there are, a broad overview, some of the things that are incorporated in this. The other thing that I feel, quite frankly, very strongly about, is we started the budget process in terms of analyzing the budget, and we started to do it by series, very much the way the Board of Finance does. I'd like to see us continue to do that so that we're going through the series, and we are going through line by line. We are the only body that can do that. We're the only one who can make adjustment. To me, the process that we adhere to is so valuable when we're doing line by line, because we are then validating every single item and the decision that we move forward. Otherwise, we've done a vote on a total budget, but we haven't validated the need for all those specifics. And all those specifics are what ends up with that total, and we're the only body that can do anything with it. I can't stress how strongly I feel on this, and I really think we need to stay with that.
Other comments. Is this sufficient guidance, or do you wish to have this on the item, on the agenda for the first meeting in September? Mrs. Cannelli?
I'm fine.
You're fine? Mr. Convatito?
How about...
Mr. Lou? Mrs. Gerber? Mr. Fattabey?
I have no care.
Okay, Mrs. Brand? Do we need another shot at this discussion, or are we fine with tonight's discussion?
As I said before, that one piece about that line by line, I would like to see incorporated in this.
Okay.
So if that's in agreement and people are in agreement with that, then that's fine. But I think it's extremely important for this body to follow through on that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, then we're done with this, which means that that particular goal that we had set for this year has been accomplished. That does not mean that this is not an ongoing goal that we will be working on to continue to refine the budget calendar, the budget process. Item B, 14, item B, which is the Communications Committee report and the recommended motion, is that the Board of Education accept the Communications Committee's report. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Cannelli and Mrs. Iaccone. Mrs. Gerber?
Okay, well, at the table tonight, there is the final, final list of past, current, and future communications implementation recommendations. It's pretty much the same that you received at the June 25th meeting. There are just a couple of small... that you received at the June twenty-fifth meeting. There are just a couple of small changes. Actually, I think the really only significant change is on the second page, number seven, "Board of Ed will schedule annual recognition of, A, Board of Ed reps from school PTAs at an October meeting," so we specified October meeting, "and B, employees who have been working in the Fairfield Public Schools for twenty-five years," and that would be at a September meeting. So, that's a change. We originally thought, well, we do new employees or retiring employees. And Dr. Tidal gave us some input and said that he thought that this would be more significant, that there could be an actual presentation, and, you know, it would be more meaningful. So, that is a change there. And I guess that's pretty much it. Everything is as it was. This was attachment H in the original, all the different documents that you received on the twenty-fifth. And so, that's, that's pretty much it. I didn't really get any negative feedback or any changes that any board members wanted to have made on this, so I'm assuming everyone is still okay with everything here. But as always, if people have questions or comments or any, anything that they feel uncomfortable with, or would like to see changed in any way, I'm happy to take any suggestions from anyone.
Mr. Lou, as a member of the committee, do you have any comments on the presentation? Any questions or comments from board members? I'm going to have Mr. Fattabey go first, because he hasn't had a shot at going first tonight.
I guess I just, I just would request the clarification as to the meaning of the word "accept" in the motion. What is that? How would you define "accept" the report? Do we have received the report?
Well, according to Robert's Rules, which I have a copy of here-
Right.
Under the adoption of or acceptance of reports, it says, "When the report of a committee has been received," that is, "has been presented to the Assembly and either read or handed to the Chair or the Secretary, the next business in order is the disposal of the report, the proper disposition depending upon its nature." And the suggestion that covers this one is, "If the report contains only a statement of fact or opinion for the information of the Assembly, the reporting member makes no motion for its disposal, as there is no necessity for action on the report. But if any action is taken, the proper motion, which should be made by someone else," and Mrs. Cannelli made that motion separate from Mrs. Gerber, "is to quote, 'accept the report,'" and here's the answer to Mr. Fattabey's question, "which has the effect of endorsing the statement and making the Assembly, our board, assume responsibility for it." So, it's endorsing this, and we accept responsibility to move this forward, is what, how Robert's Rules defines that.
All right. Because only items ten through thirteen have recommendations. So, I guess I am, which I understand your, as I interpret that definition, is that the recommendations are then adopted and become an act of the board.
Certainly, if the board, let me clarify it this way. We have made changes to the website. We did make changes to the minutes. And, and so, this is endorsing those previously made changes. And there are suggestions for sending out four memos, and that's endorsing that suggestion. But certainly, if the board wanted to separate out ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen as items that have specific recommendations and wanted to adopt those as specific recommendations, the board could do that. Yes.
Well, my interpretation, that was my point. My interpretation of what your definition of "accept" is, that by accepting the report, we're adopting, as an act, the recommendations of the report. And I guess my confusion arose as to there are only items ten through thirteen have specific recommendations that we inherently are, would be adopting with our report. Is that, I mean, I'm just trying to clarify, is that the-
It may be that-
Is that what we're doing?
The committee could very well have said, "And we recommend changing the minutes." But they chose not to use that language. I'm not sure that there's a real difference between their recommending that we change the format of minutes and one of the other recommendations, just simply because they didn't put the word "recommendation" there. Is that a fair statement, Mrs. Gerber?
I guess that with ten through thirteen, with the recommendations, this is because this will require further work, because it's when the Board of Ed Handbook is updated, it's when we're having the bylaws discussions. Those are things that will require additional official work slash votes, as opposed to the other things, which I don't think we need to have a vote, per se, to approve whether or not we set up a town hall meeting. But it was the idea that the board was in agreement, that this was something that the board as a whole wanted to move forward and do, that the board as a whole wanted to send out the quarterly memos, continue to have the recognition of students, excuse me, to have the contact with the PTA. So, the reason why we have the specific recommendations for these last ones, and we put them last, because they're something that we're not necessarily going to be acting on tonight, because we'd be acting on them later, when we revise the bylaws, when we revise the Board of Ed Handbook. So, that's why there's the difference in the language. And I even highlighted it in this version, just to kind of show that those are different than the other ones, because we're not going to be moving forward. I mean, theoretically, if this is accepted, we'll be moving forward and setting up a town hall meeting. We'll be doing the other things now, as opposed to the other things which will be taking place later, when we do the bylaw revisions and Board of Ed Handbook revisions.
And in the word that is, that they, Robert's Rules uses, is the effect of endorsing the statement. And so, endorsing is the word that you should be using. Mrs. Cannelli and Mrs. Brand?
For pure clarification, because this is before the Policy Committee as well, the phrase that you used, I didn't write it down, but you said, "By accepting it, the board assumes responsibility." Assuming responsibility is obviously a slightly vague term. That can simply mean, okay, we accept the responsibility of doing this or not, but it is now before the nine of us and out of the subcommittee's work at this point.
Correct. According to our bylaws, once the subcommittee makes its report, they are, they're finished.
This is sort of contrary to what Mrs. Gerber just said, that if we vote to accept this, it doesn't mean we are then doing one through nine. It's, we're now accept, that's what I want to be clear on. When you say that the committee assumes, by accepting it, that we are then taking the responsibility for it, that doesn't say that we are acting upon each one. That's what I want to be clear on.
Point of information-
Yes.
Because I actually wrote, and I think I copied the board members, about this very motion, because we had the word "accept" as opposed to "approve" or "adopt." Accept, approve, adopt, all the same thing. We don't typically use "accept" because we do have a motion to approve, so this is a little different. The meaning is exactly the same. Every single thing that is in that document, you are going to implement. You are committed to doing all those things if you approve this as it is written. And, and that was why I wanted people to be aware of this, that we weren't, as I think was stated at a previous meeting by our Chair, was that it would be, give us the option of consideration or discussing pieces of it. It actually is, becomes a mandate then, for this board to do all of these things. Just so we're clear as to what that is, it isn't a choice any longer. I'm not saying you should or shouldn't vote it, up or down. I'm just telling you that it is, this is an absolute. It's not a choice here.
Yeah. Robert's Rules separates motions that when you accept, you are the effect of endorsing the statement and making the board assume responsibility for it. They do, with committee reports, say, "And if you are going to adopt a specific resolution or a recommendation and say, 'We will do this,' well, then you would use the word "adopt." But they do allow for the fact that, that quote, "accepting the report is simply saying, 'Thank you. We have the report, and we now assume responsibility for it.'"
I-
So, Robert's Rules has a slightly different version, I'd say, than your definition.
Yeah, actually, and I did the same as you. I looked up Robert's Rules. In fact, that was my concern, because I want to make sure that whatever we're doing here at the table, we fully understand what we're undertaking. Because what I understood is that what we do with a report, if you're accepting the report, meaning you've read it, it's been done, there's actually no need for any action. The board can take up any of these issues at any time and do follow-up. If however you want to implement all of them, then you vote to accept, adopt, whatever it is, it is, it is that, that's the motion you will be doing if you do this.
Yeah. Well, I would say that my ruling is based on my reading of this, which is the motion to accept the report, which has the effect of endorsing the statement and making the Assembly room assume responsibility for it, is exactly that.
Founding it.
That we now are responsible for it. And if there is some reason that we can't move forward on a specific thought, then we don't have to, as a board. We can choose not to. That's my ruling. You may differ than that, but that's my ruling, that, that accepting a report is an acceptable process, and, and it gives the board the flexibility to look at these items as the committee, as the board tries to implement it, and individuals on the board try to implement it.
The only other issue I had was also on number three. PTAs adopt or invite board members. Board members don't typically invite themselves or members of the board. I understand what you're trying to do here, I do. But the way this reads, it reads as if we're reaching out to them to set up a date, when it's actually what we could do is, instead of doing this, because I don't think that's within our right to do that, invite ourselves. And I think I mentioned this before, that instead, what we should be doing is offer to attend any meetings that they wish. So, if that's how you're going to approach it, I'd be much more comfortable with that.
I actually have, in fact, contacted all the PTA presidents and said that we would like to, if they would like to have us attend their meetings. I have not made it sound at all as if it was a bad idea, nor did I, the committee visited last year. I know you brought it up last-
Right. I was just having a concern when I read it, this.
Right. And I did the exact same thing as I did when the committee visited all the PTAs last year, because I was aware of your concerns.
So, it's an offer, and they can decide-
It's an offer. They can accept it. They can reject it. I've already gotten some very enthusiastic responses.
Oh, I have no doubt that they'd like it. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't basically saying, "Hi, I'm at your house. Here's my party."
No, it's their agenda, their choice.
Right.
Yeah. Was that it?
That's it.
Any other? Mr. Conventito?
I just want to be clear on the interpretation of Robert's Rules and what we're voting on. Is, your interpretation is that if we vote to accept this, it then sits with the body until there's a subsequent motion to enact any and/or all ideas or and/or initiatives contained in the report. Would take another motion to enact?
No, it's not. It's the effect of endorsing the statement. So, we are endorsing each of these statements, and the individuals who are going to follow up on this, you know, for instance, the, the meeting with PTAs, we are endorsing the statement, and that's allowing Jessica to make contact with PTAs and move that forward. We're saying that we're going to do quarterly reports on, on board meetings, and the secretary's going to do that, and that would allow Jessica to move forward on that, because we're endorsing that idea. I don't think it would require a separate motion to implement each one of these at the moment.
By accepting the report of the subcommittee, doesn't the subcommittee then disband?
The subcommittee disbands, but individual members who, who may have an interest in doing some of these items, for instance, the PR intern, I volunteered to talk with the other two, the two universities to see if we could do that. So, individual members may move that forward, but the committee will disband. Correct. Is that it? Mr. Lou?
So, and you're saying, based on your ruling, that you take responsibility, that this is something we can or don't have to act on. It is not binding. We can't, if we want to, we can do it, if we, or some of it, we don't have to do all of it. Because at first, when I heard-
I'm going to say yes to that. Yeah. It gives us the flexibility-
To do whatever we want. Today, we don't want to do it. Tomorrow, we do. Parts of it.
For instance, number eleven, if we find during the discussion of the bylaws, that we choose not to change that format, we have the freedom to not change it.
And then what about something like thirteen, where you say, this is, one way it was interpreted as a survey, but then other members thought the survey should have gone the other way? There's no final outcome, but it says we should use this as a goal-setting thing. It's very unclear.
What that means is that if we choose to go forward with the survey, that when the board establishes their next set of goals, the board can discuss whether to do a survey or not, and what its purpose would be, and then the board would either take action that way or not.
So, then that board would have to vote on that particular one?
On setting the goals for the board, the answer is yes.
I think that sort of does it for me, because then you're saying, basically, we do really need to clarify and finally make an adoption on something. And if you're not going to do that with all of them, then there's a very, there's a lot of inconsistencies, and I think that's the problem. That's why you have Robert's Rules. I think, in one sense, I can understand you saying, "Well, this is my ruling, and we could sort of put that in the minutes and understand it." But how these things are done, they're not even complete yet. Some of them are still ideas waiting to be formed. Some of them are ideas waiting to be approached by the entire board and to be looked at and debated. To not, I think to have this as a step forward is, is a good thing. But whether to approve it or to accept it without being specific to each one, I think, would be a mistake. So, I don't think I would be able to vote this forward.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Cannelli?
What's the alternative? I mean, how does the subcommittee disband?
The alternative is to do nothing and simply say, "Thank you very much. The committee has finished their work, and we take no action."
And we have your ideas.
Yeah, we have your ideas. We take no action.
May I?
Yes, please.
And so, then, we take no action, but we have them, and then you could build them into the calendar, agenda, as we are trying to go through the year to approve them or to solidify them and have more detail on them, and then to decide whether we vote on them. Is that correct? That could be one way of doing it.
Yes, that could be one way of doing it, to, to say, "We have the ideas," and, and the Chair will exercise whether the board really endorsed it or not, and decide whether to move one idea forward versus or not. My preference is that the Board of Ed does give some form of endorsement, the word being "accept," which says, "We endorse the ideas that are on here, and try your best to move this forward," and the Chair will do so. Absent that, then I would have really no direction from the board. Please do, and then Mrs. Gerber.
I thank you for that clarification. And I think, again, your words helped me make a decision on this. It's very difficult to endorse a half idea. And unfortunately, some of these things are not full ideas yet. So, to endorse them, I think, would be sending us in the wrong direction. I think they are great first steps. I would hope that the Chair would, would pepper them throughout the year to see as we could work on them and push them forward. And a lot of them, I think, will hopefully get implemented. But as, as a whole, to sort of do that, I think, could cause trouble for us.
Mrs. Gerber?
Well, I guess one, one question I have for the board in general is that, you know, we've been discussing this for many months. I, we made the presentation. I asked for board feedback. No one has come back, to me at least, to say that any of these things are something that people don't feel comfortable with. So, I guess my, my concern is that if, or my, my question, I guess, is that if people had issues, problems, concerns with any of these, you know, then they should share them. And, you know, we could flesh things out if people think that they're incomplete, or if there are ones that people disagree with, we could take them out. But absent that, I'm not quite, I feel like we're going to be in limbo here, and, and I'm not quite sure how to move forward with that.
Mrs. Iaccona, followed by Mr. Lou.
Thank you. I'm wondering if somebody can clarify what's being left out that's a half idea, half completed, because I'm not understanding why we can't accept a report with the expectation that the Chairman will make sure that this stuff is implemented. Website changes, that's happening. The minute changes, it's happened. Keep in contact with the PTAs, it's happening. Send out the four memos, it's happening. Town hall meeting, there's two suggested dates. Provide an opportunity at this for recognition. I'm just, I don't, I'm, I'm missing where, where's the half idea? The BOE will schedule annual recognition. Board of Ed members will post bios on the website. It gives us a date that we're supposed to give it to Meg. There's PR intern, a college intern, the Chair will consult. It's the action, I mean, the idea and the action is right here. And really, what you're getting hung up on is stuff that the committee has recommended that we vet out further at a later time, which is, you know, the committee recommends saving this issue for the bylaws. Okay, great. That means, then, that requires further action. So, the Chairman will make sure that we- So the chairman will make sure that we discuss it then, right? The committee recommends saving this, you know, with a public comment, recommends saving this issue for the bylaws. That means, again, it would get to the bylaw discussion. And then for the survey, this is a reminder to the chair that the committee recommends that the board consider this for their goal-setting process for next year. There's an idea and an action in every single one of these things, but some of them require further vetting. So I don't, I'm sorry, I'm completely out of the loop, missing the point on this whole thing. I don't understand why we didn't accept this 10 minutes ago, disband the committee and move on to the next thing. Nobody's given any objection to any of these 13 things that are in here and the 15 times it's been on the agenda. So I'd move to call the question. No one agrees, but--
Motion's been made. Is there a second to call the question? Mrs. Cannelli. It's a non-debatable motion. It requires six affirmative votes. Is the committee ready, the board ready to vote? All in favor of calling the question, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. All against? One, two, three, four. So the debate goes on. I think Mr. Lu had his hand up, and then Mrs. Brand.
I think, I understand, I think this is a confusing issue, not necessarily that individuals are confused, but there are different sides to this, and my feeling is, you want to err on the side of caution. At first, I did think it was being nitpicking, but I think there is so much confusion about adopting, accepting, to how much are these complete ideas. I think there is no reason why we shouldn't be able to say, "We've got this information and now we will attack each one of them and really make sure that they, we commit to what we say." And I think 13 is a great example. So unfortunately, I'm going to read it, spend this time. "Survey: Students and families in Fairfield are being surveyed on a number of items, and this pattern will continue, given the school climate legislation. There has been a suggestion to have the Board of Education also conduct a survey. There was debate in the committee as to whether the focus of the survey should solely be on effectiveness of the board communications or more broadly on the effectiveness of the BOE. The committee recommends that the board consider this for..." So it's considering an idea, but it's not an idea that you want to vote on as if to say, "It's done deal," because we haven't decided what we want the survey to be. And I think that's where I would say, we, I don't know if there's another Robert's Rules word for saying, "Yes, we've got this and we're going to go forward at, or we've got it in our hot little hands and now we'll go forward on each one and look at them and see how we're going to, you know, do we agree on what a survey, what the survey is going to be? And are we going to vote on that?" Because I even remember, within our subcommittee, there was some contention about what this survey should be. When you have that right there and you've put it into 13 other topics and there's enough confusion amongst board members, I think it's something we should say, "Hey, we've got the information, we'll move forward on them individually."
In answer to your question, then, Mrs. Brand and then Mrs. Gerber. Robert's Rules says, if you're not going to approve or adopt, the appropriate word to use is to accept. And that's from Robert's Rules. Mrs. Brand.
Quite frankly, 11, 12, and 13, to, in my opinion, if we vote for this, we, I do see it as binding, and I won't be a member of the board when they are voting on these for the bylaws. So if we, in my opinion, vote on this this evening, I am making it binding on behalf of other people, and I don't think I have the right to do that. I will not be supporting it, not because I don't think the things have merit, I don't think it's necessary. I think, as others have spoken, we can take these up and implement them. Some of them already are in the process of being done anyway. And that's fine. But on this particular case, I am very uncomfortable doing it at this time, again, because I think this is, my vote then would be binding, so I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Mrs. Iaccona.
I just respectfully beg to differ, because it says very clearly here in these additional statements, "The committee recommends saving this issue for the annual bylaws discussion in the fall." It says right, in 11, that's what it says. It says on 12, that the committee recommends saving this issue for the annual, so it means, "Don't do this right now." It means, "Save it." You're accepting it, you're going to save it for the bylaws discussion. That's my expectation. And it says right here, on number 13, "The committee recommends that the board consider this for their goal-setting process for the next year." That means, next year, when the board that's here comes in, they read this whole paragraph and they decide, the board as a whole decides, what kind of survey you're going to do, who does the survey, how the survey gets done. I just, I think we're, this has gone way too deep. If there's things in here that you don't like, you don't like 12, you don't like 13, then don't vote for this. But to go over, we're arguing over a word. And it's very clear, it's not, it's all spelled out. Read it from start to finish. This is really, seriously, people.
Any other final comments from board members on this discussion? Okay, this is an action item to the Board of Education, accept the Communications Committee report. Are there any comments from the public? Please state your name and address.
Suzanne Muska, 123 Rygate Road. A lot of this is very, very nice, and I don't mean disrespect to anybody who put time into this. In regards to number five, the town hall meeting, November 16th over 23rd, I don't know, are we having a town hall meeting to discuss budget? We're having a town hall meeting to discuss what's going on in the school district. I think having more town hall meetings in order to vet out what it is we're discussing would be helpful. That way, you don't have to necessarily take the microphone every two minutes. My concern is, while I appreciate that this says a lot of these things will be considered, I would hate to find that public comment or something got addressed without proper notification. My concern is, we seem to be having a lot of communication issues in the school district as we saw over the summer. I appreciate that the Board of Ed wants to control its communication and be effective. I do think that there's another layer to this that needs to be addressed, and it's the communications of the school district to the community at large, not necessarily just the bios and blogs that you all want to put on there. Communication needs to be tightened, not necessarily just by this body, but by the school district on a whole. And I would really love to see some sort of direction so that I don't continue, I don't find myself on the front page of a newspaper with my emails being released. That was very disconcerting to me and very alarming to now know that my communication to members of the school district, our principals, and employees of the town can now find me on the front page of the paper. That is the communications I would like to see addressed by this committee, not your blog, not your bios. While I appreciate that it's a very nice element, it's not something I would like. I think this is a bigger issue that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Okay, is the board ready for any, any action? Okay. Mr. Fadabene.
I guess, I think a lot of these initiatives are good, but I think, I agree, they're not necessarily complete to implement yet, and I think requires further board discussion. So actually, based on the chair's ruling on what his interpretation of Robert's Rules is and accept is, I'm going to have to vote no for this.
Any other comments, Mrs. Cannelli?
I'm taking the exact opposite of Mr. Fadabene for the same reason, which is due to the chair's, I actually appreciate what Mr. Lu said about, "I wish I had that right verb from Robert's Rules to use." He asked for some fourth verb, but our chair then provided us with the clarification, if you're not going to do endorsing, if you're not going to do the approval, the proper word to use is "accept." And I have to accept that that is how the definition is being used. I don't take this as a mandate to implement with a timeline given. We're accepting the report. And so I'm going to be satisfied with our chair's definition of the word and how it's to be used.
Final comments. Mr. Fadabene.
I'd like you to clarify that definition again, because my understanding, I--
I can only read the same words. I can't clarify it, I can only read what it says.
I know you can read the words, but your understanding of accepting the report implies that it is, that it is now an act of the body to implement.
Which has, all I can say is, it has the effect of endorsing the statement and making the assembly it uses, but I say Board of Education, assume responsibility for it.
The report, assume responsibility for the report.
Assume responsibility for the report.
That does not, in my opinion, mean that you implement the report. It means you assume responsibility for the report. But your interpretation of that, of that Robert's Rule language, is that we now are going to move forward implementing the accepted report. Is that your ruling?
That we're endorsing the statements. We're endorsing the statements. One through nine have very specific statements of how to move forward. 10, 11, 12, 10, 11, 12 say, "This question should be put to the board at a future time so the board may talk about it." And so it would be my responsibility to make sure that those items get on the board calendar at the appropriate times when we're going to talk about the bylaws or our goals or anything else here, the handbook. So it won't require us to do that, but it will require me to make sure it gets scheduled at the appropriate time so the board can finish the discussion on that item.
I have no problem with items 10 through 13, because it's very clear in the report that the recommendation, what the recommendation is and what we are adopting. It is, in my opinion, items one through 10, run through nine, were drawn clear as to whether, what action is to be taken, because there's no specific recommendation to take that action. It's just a statement. So your ruling, it's an interpretation of Robert's Rules of accepting that, is that by accepting the report, items one through nine are going to be implemented.
Correct.
And my interpretation of Robert's Rules would be that by accepting the report is now in front of the body. The body had accepted the report, it's up for the body's determination and further action to do what it wants with that report. But the ruling of the chair is not that, and I think that's a misunderstanding.
The ruling of the chair exactly is, we are endorsing the statements, so we will move each of the statements forward.
And based on that interpretation, I cannot vote for--
I understand that.
--accepting this report.
I understand that.
And I just want all the members of the board to be clear what their act is, means with respect to the rules, with the chairman's ruling on the interpretation of Robert's Rules.
Fair enough. If there are no, if there are no further comments, are we ready for a vote? All in favor of the motion that the Board of Education accept the Communications Committee report, raise your hand, say aye. Mrs. Cannelli. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iaccona, all opposed. Mr. Convitito, Mr. Lu, Mr. Fadabene, Mrs. Brand. So the motion fails. The report has been delivered, so according to our bylaws, the committee is officially disbanded, and the board takes no action. Salary and benefit adjustment for food service workers. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve a salary and benefit adjustment for food service workers for the 2013-14 school year as listed in enclosure number seven. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Iaccona, Mrs. Cannelli. Do we have any presentation from Mrs. Moncel at all, or is the board, we did discuss this in executive session, is the board ready to act?
You have a, in the public documents, you have the recommendation.
Any comments from board members? Hearing none. Go to the public. Any comments from the public on the motion to approve a salary and benefit adjustment for food service workers for the 2013-14 school year as listed in enclosure seven? Hearing none. Back to the board for action. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. We have a, okay. Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convitito, Mr. Lu, Mrs. Gerber, Phil Dwyer, Mrs. Iaccona, all opposed. Mr. Fadabene, and let the record show that Mrs. Brand stepped out for a moment. So that item is done. Initial discussion of 2013--
What's that item? What do I like?
Oh, I'm sorry. Before we move on to the next item, do you have an item you would--
Mr. Chair, I believe, under new business, I would like to bring forward a motion that's not on the agenda tonight. And I guess procedurally, I'll state the motion and then it gets voted on. I just don't want you to move on to other issues before we get out of the new business section, so--
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, no, this is connected, so--
When other members return, I'd like to put forward that motion. So we have a full body here. I just want to alert you that I'm planning to add something to the agenda, and I don't want you to move on to a public comment before I do that.
Yeah, well, we're good.
Well, we're missing a particular board member, and would you like--
We have two out of the room right now. Is that correct?
Oh, yes, we do.
Both are out of the room at the moment. I saw missing one.
Can we do a discussion of board goals first?
We still have a quorum, and to add, provided everybody is willing to add an item, who's currently at the table, we could vote to add the item and then discuss it while people are waiting to come in.
Fine. All right.
Wait, point of information. You need four out of six at the table right now.
Yeah, but we need six votes to--
No, you don't. You need two-thirds of--
The quorum at the table. I was just trying to be courteous to the other members.
Okay, you're right. You only need two-thirds of your quorum, so it would change.
So it keeps changing based on people floating in and out?
Who's going in and out?
Based on who's in the, in the room, is my understanding. And I don't know, you're the chair, that's what I'm asking. That's my, that's my interpretation of it.
Yeah. I was just trying to be courteous to the other members of the body.
I mean, if you want to hold off, then hold off.
Does that help?
I'll go forward then, okay?
You want to add an item to the agenda, is there any reason why you can't add that after we have the initial discussion of board goals? Then we will have an initial discussion of board goals and then I will come back to you, so that we can have the member come in. The board goals, last year, we had discussion in August, September, I think approved it in October, and we adopted five particular goals, which we've been working on throughout the year. This year, had on the calendar to have board goals on for discussion in September and approval in October, and wanted to ask the board two questions. We have the goals that were suggested but were not adopted last year as a possible beginning point for discussion, and what process you want to use to add new ideas to that list of goals. It's not in front of you at the moment, but you all probably remember it from last fall. The second question is more of process. Every two years, we have election, and therefore, while this past year, it was convenient to adopt a set of goals in October, because all of us were still going to be here after November. Every other year, if the board adopts goals in October, it risks not having the same board members here after November 7th or 8th, or whatever the election date is. And so does the board want to think of that and perhaps adopt goals in two-year cycles so that we may discuss it in September and October, but we wait until the new board is impaneled, have discussion with the new board, and kind of make this a January adoption of board goals that would last for two years until the next time the board has a possibility of, of switching over. So really, two questions for discussion tonight. How do you want to approach the goal-setting process and what do you think about the two-year cycle idea? Mrs. Iaccona, followed by Mr. Lu.
I think you should definitely move to a two-year cycle, without question.
Okay. Mr. Lu?
Well, I kind of think both, in that if we didn't implement our goals from last year--
We did, but yeah.
I thought you said we didn't.
No, no, we've, we worked on and implemented all five goals. We've, quote, "accomplished" all five goals. The one that is still in process is the committee report accomplished its goal in presenting the report to the policy committee at the beginning of the summer, but the policy committee is continuing to review that document and has not yet brought it forward. But absent that, the other four have been accomplished.
Yeah, okay. I can see two years, too. I think the new board members should, who are going to be spending more time than the outgoing members, should be involved in those goals.
Would that be a specific statement, say-- Would that be a specific statement, say, let's not do anything until the new board is impaneled and begin discussion after that happens? Or do we have some discussion but not have any approval till the new board is impaneled and have an inch, a chance to input on that?
I think the latter. I think it would be good for us to, you know, all put our thoughts out there, but I think we'd want to also include the new board members' thoughts as well.
Mrs. Brand and Mrs. Iaccona.
I think it would be helpful for the new board members that, you know, if this, the folks here want to make some recommendations, that's fine. I do think it is up to the new board to decide what they want their goals to be. That's number one. I would actually prefer we go with an annual, in part because we will have people trying to decide what they want to do for the next two years, who at that point in time, I think it's their first meeting or relatively, they'll have been on the board for a very short time. So quite frankly, if we're want to help facilitate this, make some recommendations, that will help the board members who are coming on that are new for their consideration to help smooth the process. But I would still encourage you to do an annual because you don't know what's going to come up. We have so many changes with the state as well. I still would think annually would be better.
Mrs. Iaccona.
Well, that being said, I think you should just move the whole thing off to the next board because they're the ones that are going to be working on stuff. They should decide if it's one year, two year, whatever. And in terms of board goals, I think this qualifies, but I would like to wrap up our goals from last year, and I, too, would like to add an item to the agenda at some point, and it's regarded, regarding the PR intern. Because now I don't know what's happening to this report, and for, I can't tell you how many times, it's been open-ended, and we keep talking about getting a PR intern. So if it's that, we have to add it to the agenda and approve it and make it an action item, or whatever it is we need to do, I would like to do that, Mr. Chairman, whenever you think it's appropriate.
Okay. Let me take that into consideration. And other comments on the discussion on board goals? Mr. Fattabene?
I also think it's probably good to at least look at that annually, and whether some goals roll off or some goals are maintained because they haven't been completed or are completed or modified. An annual review process, I think, is better than waiting two years, in a sense. And I also would wait until, in an election year, when you have the new members on the board to make any decisions on the board goals.
There seem to be two different approaches. Hold off all discussion or have some discussion and hold off a final decision till the new board members. Kind of A or B. I think Mr. Lou was saying, okay, have some discussion but hold off the decision. Any people who, I think, Mr. Fattabene said, no, hold off all the discussion.
I did.
Huh? You did. Did you agree with that?
I'm always of the opinion, discuss anything you want, whenever you want. It's a question of what you act.
It's a question of whether I schedule it on the agenda or not. Yes.
I would agree with Mr. Monsell. In that we are, we have a wealth of knowledge that is up here, and that's not, we obviously need the new board members' input, but to just start, we're in the middle of a lot of work. I mean, there's a certain bit of vision on this board that we're losing with the departure of certain members. I think to have them be part of the discussion of worthwhile goals would be invaluable for the remaining, remaining members, as well as the new ones to come on. That's not setting a direction. It's absolutely appropriate that the, that the new board be vested in what we set as a goal. And as for the goals themselves, I would think it should be an annual process, but determining the goal will come with a timeline, and some goals simply will be appropriate to have with a two-year timeframe.
We will, Mr. Convetito.
My preference would be, and with all due respect to the members that are currently leaving the board, and I thank you for your service, would be to get their input in writing as to what they think the board goals should be, okay? And to hold on to those until the new board is seated, and to use those as discussion points and starting off points, because I think their perspective as leaving the board will have a different perspective on what those goals are. Those of us who are remaining on the board, our perspective's going to be the same, and I don't want to discuss this 15 different times between now and December.
I will, I will, it's next. At the moment, I will say that, that my divine rod says that I will send out the goals that were not adopted as a starting point for board members. I'll ask each of you to make whatever comments you want. I will revise that document and send it out to board members, and if board members want to have it placed on an agenda, I will do so, but at the moment, I will not. And we'll have that as a draft document available to the newly constituted board, which includes five of us plus four new people. Thank you for the discussion. Public comments and petitions. Oh, I'm sorry. We have Mr. Convetito first.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to the, under new business, a voting item and a motion, And the motion would be to subcontract, excuse me, to subcontract out the Fairfield Public Schools' first food services program to include employees, managers, staffing, and all necessary needs, and to authorize the administration to send out a request for proposal to such vendors interested in, in running the Fairfield Public Schools' food services program.
Now, that is the topic that you'd like to add. That's the motion you would like to add, and you're asking, the motion is to add that topic to our agenda.
Correct.
Is there a second for that? Mrs. Brand, any discussion on adding that as an agenda item? This is an administrative process, so we don't have to go to the public. We will go to the public when the actual motion is on the table. Any further discussion? If not, ask for the vote. All in favor of adding this item to the agenda? We have a, Mrs. Cannelli is yes, Mr. Convetito is yes, Mr. Lou is yes, Mrs. Gerber is yes, Phil Dwyer is yes, Mrs. Iaccona is yes, Mrs. Brand is yes, all opposed. Mr. Fattabene? We have seven in favor, one against. We have our six required votes, so I would ask you now to formally put the motion in front of us, and then we'll have discussion.
I make a motion for the Fairfield Public School System to subcontract out the food services program to include employees, managers, and staffing needs, and to authorize the administration to send out a request for proposal for such interested vendors.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Brand, do you wish to have further, as the maker of the motion, do you wish to have any further comments?
Yes, I make, I make the motion based on the history of the food services program, particularly in the last year, in which we're now funding healthcare and benefit and pension programs out of the school budget. This was supposed to be a standalone program that self-funded itself. With the new legislations that have come forward in the last two years, it's, it's become more and more obvious to me that we, as a district, can't do this. There are a number of districts around the area that run these programs on a subcontract basis that, in my opinion, have better food service programs than ours. Westport and Weston being two of them, and their prices for lunch are comparable, I think they're within a dime of ours. So I just think it's time that we investigate outside vendors, and we truly get in some good, healthy lunch programs within our schools, which I think are better served by an outside vendor.
Mrs. Brand is the secondor of the motion. Do you wish to make any comments?
Again, this had to do with, one, maintaining healthy food, two, the financial situation that we landed in at the end of the year, to me, was, I think, very disturbing. This gives us some choices moving forward, which I think are valuable, and I think we have to consider because otherwise, we're making a decision in a vacuum.
Any other comment from board members on this motion? Mr. Fattabene?
Yeah, no, I, obviously, the food service program has certain, or currently appears to have certain deficiencies because of the, the loss that was incurred in the last fiscal year, and clearly, some changes need to be made. And that was also one of the reasons I had voted not to support a salary increase, primarily because they're already operating at a loss, and the program may not be able to support any additional expenses. So something needs to be done. My problem with this particular motion is that I do not believe I was provided with sufficient information to make an informed decision as to whether or not this course of action is the best to do at this time or not. Therefore, I am not going to vote for this, or support this motion at this time.
Other comments from members of the board? Mrs. Cannelli?
I'm still debating the motion. I did definitely have some reservations about it, chiefly being, as you outsource, the very strong accountability factor is certainly a concern for me. How do you sever ties mid-contract if you're not happy with your service, whereas we have direct control now? The issue of food quality, which we have direct control over now, we're looking at, I don't think just a potential, an imminent influx of more money with the change to the high school schedule, which I do believe will happen, and which will now put a good number of additional bodies in the high school cafeteria, and if you create that environment, it's likely to lead to students spending money on food. And so that's a, a budget unknown there. So again, the accountability factor, the control factor, has some hesitation. And I will also say, concerns for the staff. I'm not, not having been through the RFP process, I'd be very concerned that there is protections in place for our staff members that are strong and have some heft to them because they are part of what's making this district function. And yes, we have to be financially responsible. There's no question. We have to at least have this discussion, which is why I supported it being placed on the agenda. But it's not just a dollars and cents issue. This is affecting an awful lot of our staff members, and I would want them protected.
Any other comments? One last, go ahead.
To address Mrs. Cannelli's concern, a lot of those issues actually can be addressed in what you write in your RFP.
I would agree with Mrs. Brand's comment. I think the thing that impressed me most is that there are a lot of high-quality districts who have failed us to be successful, and I am convinced that they have not just measured it by whether they saved a dollar here or a dollar there, that they're very much concerned about the quality of their food service and not just a dollars and cents. I think we will find that because we are a larger district than most, and many on the list that we were provided, that we will be, we will receive competitive responses to the RFQ from vendors who wish to, you know, provide a good quality service to us and have us be a showcase. So I am supporting this. Any other comments from board members? And now, if I can prevail upon you to read the motion, so that members of the public will be clear as to the motion, since it's not in writing in front of them, and I'll ask for comments from members of the public.
Motion is to subcontract out the Fairfield Public Schools' food services program to include employees, managers, and staffing needs, and to authorize the administration to send out a request for proposal from all interested vendors.
Having heard the motion, any comments from members of the public? Hearing none. Back to the board for action. You just read the motion. Any board member that made to have it read again? We're ready to act on it? All?
Just to clarify.
Go ahead. Clarify the motion.
Clarify the motion that this is pursuing the RFP. If we don't like what we get from it, it does not bind us to this outsourcing.
It is pursuing the RFP, and we are moving forward on this to go to a outside vendor.
But if we don't like what we...
Based on our discussion within the executive committee, that is what we're doing. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. Mr. Convetito, Mr. Lou, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iaccona, Mrs. Brand, all opposed. Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Fattabene, the motion passes six to two. Okay.
I wanted to add something.
Now, you wish to add an item.
I would like to add a motion regarding the PR intern, and I'll just read exactly what's in the paragraph. "A college student, the chair will consult with local universities to implement in the fall. Committee recommends to have one intern from Sacred Heart for one semester and one from Fairfield U for the other semester. The chair will work with the superintendent to determine the appropriate staff person to supervise the intern. This person will also work with the board secretary." I'd like to add that to the agenda for approval.
Okay, so a motion will be, would be added to, to implement that one item. Is there a second to add that item to the agenda? Mrs. Gerber, any further comment that you wish to make?
It's just that we've, I've been here for five years. This is something that has consistently come up, and we talk about it, and we say it's a really good idea, and then it never happens. And I would hope that the board would really, since no one has, I have not heard anyone outwardly reject this idea, it doesn't cost us anything, and we get an extra pair of hands to help with what I think are really important things for our students, and getting the message out about what they're doing and accomplishing. I really think that we should do this, and I hope you'll vote in favor of it.
Mrs. Gerber, as the secondor of the motion, do you wish to make a comment?
Just to add it right now.
Okay, so all in favor of adding this agenda item to the agenda? Raise your hand, say aye. It is unanimous. So now, put the official motion in front of us.
I move that the board work to hire a PR intern, a college student. Do you want all this other wording in it? "The chair will consult with the local universities to implement in the fall. Committee recommends to have one intern from Sacred Heart for one semester and one from Fairfield U for the other semester. The chair will work with the superintendent to determine the appropriate staff person to supervise the intern. This person will also work with the board secretary."
Is there a second? Mrs. Gerber, any further discussion on this as a motion? We had extensive discussion on the other item. Mr. Fattabene, then Mr. Lou.
You go to Mr. Logue.
Mr. Lou first, and then Mr. Fattabene.
Can we clarify that this is a non-paid position?
There's no money budgeted for it.
No money budgeted, so...
Just want to make sure that that's clear, because I don't want it added to the budget.
There's no money to pay anybody for it.
But I believe we are required to pay something to the universities.
Do you want to, she's following on, on that comment. So, Mr. Fattabene, if Mrs. Cannelli can follow up on that comment?
Well, I was going to follow on the comment, but I'm going to clarify Mr. Lou's.
Mr. Lou's statement is his intent to make a motion to amend that, motion on the floor to read unpaid intern?
Yes.
I'm fine with that, although I know we're getting away from friendly amendments.
Thank you for that friendly amendment.
Okay, grammatic, okay. Unpaid is fine with me.
You've made it as a grammatical change.
Yes.
Not grammar.
No? No, Mr. Lou just wanted to make sure that he heard the word correctly, that's all. Mrs., was somebody over here raising a hand? If not, Mrs. Brand.
Yeah, I apologize. I wasn't aware there was a cost with this.
There isn't.
There is not.
I, I thought Mrs. Cannelli said that we have to pay the universities, though.
No, she's confused.
Depending on universities, some universities do expect it, other universities do not. So it will depend on our conversation. Obviously, if the local universities have a required cost, there's, unless this board were to take action, the idea would die on the vine.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Yes. Mr. Fattabene?
Could Dr. Title indicate an approximation as to his belief, how much staff time would be necessary to supervise these two interns?
It's one intern.
I thought one from each university, or either or.
Alternating. Alternating.
The other half of the year.
All right.
Bless you.
I can't really give you a good approximation of that. It really depends on how many hours they work, and who you get in there, and how self-sufficient they are. I think initially, there'd be some work upfront in terms of identifying the tasks the individual would be doing, and then it depends on the quality of the person you get. It will depend how much supervision is necessary, but there will be some staff and administrative time to oversee this work. If they're going to say, put out a newsletter, someone else is going to proofread it. So yes, there will be some work on our part to make this happen, but I can't quantify it for you.
Any further questions from board members?
So, I guess, this opens up a can of worms. Are you, is it going to increase the budget?
The answer's no.
No. That's my perspective.
Mr. Convetito.
Is it going to take away from administrators' times doing other tasks that need to be done? And if so, is the cost benefit through the chair to Dr. Title? And if so, is the cost benefit through the chair to Dr. Tittle worth the investment in an intern?
My opinion is, it's worth a try, provided we can get somebody in who's really, you know, quality person. If we try it for a period of time, and it looks like, hey, wait a minute, this is way more work than we bargained for, and this has taken a lot of staff time to oversee, and we're not getting from it, then I think we'd have to pull the plug on it. So, I'm, you know, we're game to, to give it a shot. I think there's always this need that we don't have, you know? I mean, some districts employ somebody full-time just to do, you know, public communication. We don't have that. So, you know, this is an opportunity to see if we can't, you know, make some progress in that, in that regard. If we think it's too much, we'll, we'll yell.
Any final comments? Mrs. Iraconer.
I just want to be clear, because I don't want to lose out on this over the whole unpaid thing. The committee is only recommending that it comes from Fairfield U and Sacred Heart. Should we find out that it comes from Sacred, you know, you have to pay either one of these, certainly, we can, there are plenty of universities and colleges that we can seek, but obviously, our preference is to support the local community.
The chair would say it would be my intent that if it didn't work out with those two universities, but it did work out with another educational institution, I would pursue that, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
If there are no further comments, can I prevail upon, the, Mrs. Gerber, the, your communications report was on the back table?
Yes.
Okay, so for members of the public, item number nine, effectively is the motion. The only thing that's missing from that is I move that, and the additional, other word, unpaid. So, having explained it that way, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, back to the board, ready for action. All in favor of approving that motion, raise your hand. I have a unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Fattabean.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so our little public comments and petitions. Any members of the public, my comment on items subject to the timeframe, and just line up over here, and we'll take you in order that you have presented yourselves. And the rules of public comment are printed on the agenda. Please state your name and address.
Kelly Dunn, can you hear me? Kelly Dunn, 205 Tucker Lane. I first want to say, I'm thrilled about the PR intern. I hope there's a way to not, to somehow not lose all this work that's been done in the communications. It would be such a waste, in my opinion, of resources to do that. That's the first thing I want to say. If they hadn't worked more of these things into agenda items since September, October, I haven't recommended. Another couple of quick things on the budget side, having reviewed it many times in the last few years. Number eight, I would definitely put public work session. I think that needs to be specified as public. I think many members need to see it that way, and I think I should say that. The other thing I would definitely, definitely do is make sure when you guys talk about mandates, projected mandates, when you guys talk about fixed costs versus variable costs, make sure that you're on the last time that salaries, teacher and administrator salaries were negotiated. That doesn't come up often enough, and I really think it needs to come up, whether it was, you know, when they're actually negotiated, because people keep, used to just badger me with information about, well, when was it not negotiated, and when was this, and when was that? And I keep thinking it's, it's every six months, or it's annual, and it's, it's, it needs to be very specific and very clear to the public, so that when that subject comes up, and the whole budget review comes up, and you're clear on what's fixed, what's variable, just when negotiations actually took place, because I know there are many people who aren't clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Kelly Jacobson. I live at 335 Acorn Lane. Unfortunately, I came an hour late, so you might have touched upon what I'm about to address, but, so I apologize in advance. And I'm here to ask about the status of the materials, both for students and parents, to support the new K through two math curriculum that was approved in the spring. From what I took away from the March and April Board of Ed meetings, were that these materials for both students and parents were to be written this summer and rolled out to support the new math curriculum in place of implementing an already existing text. As a parent of a second grader, I'm anxious to have the opportunity to look at these materials, so that I can understand my child's planned path in mathematics this year, and also such that I can better understand the specifics around how the planned curriculum will be taught to my child, so that I can better help him at home. And just related to this, I lay back at the mat, finding so much of the teacher and administration's enthusiasm about the new math curriculum was rooted in the idea that it allows for the use of multiple strategies in problem solving, and I think this is really terrific. However, what I think our schools have lost sight of a bit by not having a comprehensive and complete set of supporting materials that we, as parents, can touch and feel, is the idea that there are multiple strategies for learning by our children, with some kids just not being able to grasp materials as comfortably in a classroom environment as they are in a quieter, less intimidating home environment. Yet I, as a parent, for the past two years, have had absolutely no materials to aid in supporting my child in his math work at home. And we obviously live in a community where we are often and not, as parents, are able and willing and excited to assist children with schoolwork at home, yet we're not offering a set of tools for them to properly do so, and that, to me, is unfortunate. So my question's just really around, when are these materials, when will they be rolled out, when can we see them and touch them as parents? And also, is there a plan for opening up the research and investigation of already published text, as we talked about maybe doing in the spring? So, that's, those are my questions.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And please state your name and address.
Rose Miller, 148 Crane Street. Myself and others appreciate the efforts of the district to continuously improve the school climate. Myself and others are concerned that Fairfield Public Schools may not be in compliance with the Child Internet Protection Act. Myself and others want to be reassured that Fairfield Public Schools has implemented internet and network security measures to comply with the Child Internet Protection Act. Have you consulted with other neighboring school systems about best practices regarding network and internet security measures they have implemented? Myself and others want this topic to be added to the agenda of future board meetings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I see no votes approaching the podium. So, back to the board for open board comment. Any comments from individual board members? Mrs. Brand, followed by Mrs. Iraconer.
Yeah, it is actually related to a state statute, but if we have CMTs, we now have the CAP scores. If not, September 24th and the October meeting, I would like to have a discussion and a presentation from the superintendent on the strategic school profiles, as well as the test scores. I think it would be very beneficial for us, moving forward, to take a look at what that looks like. I think it will fold well into what we're talking about relative to the educational goals and, and the initiatives, and I think we will see a tie-in. But we are obligated to do this, so I would very much like to see this coming up either on the 24th or in that October meeting, so that, you know, we have an opportunity to plan accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Iraconer.
I would just like to say how thoroughly disappointed I am that there was a tremendous amount of time spent on a communications report, and we're not going to take any action on it. And I am just offering as commentary that there be some way, somehow, if the chair could look into adding this back onto the agenda as a different motion in some other format, I think that would, I, I personally would really appreciate that. I, and, Mrs. Gerber brought up a really good point, that this was sent to us, if people had issues with things, I wish that they had brought it to their attention. And it's so sad to see so much of this go in a circular file. There are really good things on here, so, that's all.
Other comments? Mrs. Gerber.
In an attempt to try to end this meeting, hopefully on a hundred, I don't know if everyone's seen here, Fairfield Live magazine has ten teens to watch, and Fairfield Public Schools have five of those ten teens, three from Ward, two from Ludlow, and some really great things that these students have accomplished. So if you haven't seen it, I'd recommend checking it out. It just came out, I believe, so, just some positive stuff. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other board comments during open board comment? The only one I would add is, a memo went out, an email went out to you about the Cabe Conference in July, for those who may have an interest in going on their own dime. The registration deadline for existing board members to get the lower rate is the end of this month. End of August 30th. For new board members, who won't know whether they're new or not officially until the November election, our district has secured an agreement that they will be able to pay the lower rate, even if they register after August 30th. But that applies to new board members. The existing board members have to comply with Cabe's existing deadline, which is August 30th. Any other comments from board members? If not, I'll entertain a, yes, Mr. Fattabean.
You were, that comment you made reminded me of something. And real briefly, that, that was our, our decision, obviously, in the last budget cycle, was to delete that, the funding of the, what I consider Board of Education professional development. Because I think those Cabe seminars are advantageous, especially for new board members. And I was, and after that, I had voted to, to reduce that funding as well, simply because of the tight budget issue, but in, in reflection, I'm not sure that was the wisest vote I cast. Because I do think it serves a purpose to, to send some of the especially new board members to Cabe. It is a better, informed, and educated board, which I think will function better, so I'm not sure what incentive one can give to new board members to dig in their own pocket after they've already spent numerous hours of volunteer time to attend those sessions, other than having the nominal expenses paid by the district. So, I'm not sure that was the wisest move, in retrospect, but I certainly appreciate the whole board's act to do it. But at some point, maybe it should be revisited, or at least put back in the budget.
Okay, I, I have registered for Cabe. And so if you want to come and have a good time with David and I, then if that's not enough incentive...
No, I am, I'm going to go register, and I will pay for it. But some people may not be as willing to do that.
Absolutely. Okay, motion to adjourn. Mr. Confortito, followed by Mr. Liu, all in favor, say aye. And it's moved.[1777.63]